Council meeting of August 9th to order. And I want to thank Emma for opening the council meeting for us. All right, I'm going to ask Captain Williams if he'd come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Jennifer, will you please take or call the role?
Councilmember Avola.
Here.
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Mayor Protam Duncan.
Here.
Mayor Boak.
Here. All right, so that takes us to special presentations, and we do have a few special presentations. And we're going to start with Ray.
We can certainly start with Captain Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry. Captain Williams.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, it's my honor to introduce the 36th Sheriff of San Bernardino County, Shannon Dykes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, City of Ucaipa, thank you for the warm welcome. Being the newly appointed sheriff, I just want to let you know it's an honor. All of you knew John McMahon, and you knew that he was really what I would call a relationship-based leader. And I want all of you to know that nothing is going to change in terms of relationships. It's very important to me, we've had a longstanding relationship with the City of Ucaipa. It's going to stay that way, and it's going to be very strong. And I want all of you to understand, especially the citizens of Ucaipa, to understand, it's our job to make sure that the city is as safe as it possibly can be, so all of you folks can live your dreams and live your dreams in a manner in which you want to live them. And I want you to know your sheriff's deputies are here for you. They are brilliant, they are the true heroes of what goes on today, regardless of the rhetoric you hear out there. And I want all of you to know that we are here for you, and that's a philosophy I stand for. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I see the things you're doing in this city. I work very closely with your city manager, who's actually a brilliant guy. And I see the revitalization of Old Town and the things that are going on there. And the Sheriff's Department absolutely loves to be a part of that, so thank you for being a partner. I'm here for all of you, whether it's as a resource, or certainly with the deputies out there on the streets. But thank you for taking good care of us.
Thank you very much. I also want to tell you that the City of Ucaipa supports its police, period. Would it be okay if we come down and take a picture with you? I'd love to have a picture with you.
It would be great, and for all the residents in the City of Ucaipa, I know that the Second Amendment is near and dear to you, and the CCW program in San Bernardino County is alive and well, and don't you worry about that. Ucaipa, thanks for being you.
So I'm going to call Superintendent Kelly Binks down for a special presentation.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, and of course, my partners over there on the bottom dais, Mr. Casey and his team. We work so well together. I wanted to come today, and I have some friends who came with me, and there are principals that got the opportunity to use the Y-PAC for their promotions at graduation. So I'm going to invite Dana Carter, our adult school principal, Dan Jervis, Parkview Middle School principal, Kathy Miller, our Valley principal, and Dan Jervis, our Parkview Middle School. And Frank Tucci, our Green Valley High School principal. And you're lucky tonight, because I'm not going to do a lot of talking, but they're just going to share really quickly their experiences, because we want you to know how grateful we are that we had this opportunity.
Thank you so much. I'm Dana Carter, Principal at Ucaipa Adult School. And I just want to say, using the Y-PAC was an amazing experience for our adults. They felt honored to be there. These are people who did not succeed initially, but they came back to the school to have successful experiences. One example, we had Elizabeth Stewart, she was 72, and she was a high school graduate this year. And she just felt very special to be in the Y-PAC, so thank you so much.
Good evening, my name's Dan Jervis, I'm the principal at Parkview Middle School. We were fortunate enough to have two ceremonies at the Y-PAC, one honoring our sixth grade award winners and seventh grade award winners. Between the two, we had over 600 students that qualified for recognitions that evening. And over the two days, we had over 1,600 people that attended our events. It was very crazy with seating arrangements, and you know, can we do pods of four, pods of five, pods of six? And the staff at the Y-PAC was just so accommodating and so helpful. I think they did something like 25 seating arrangements for our group. And the events just went off without a hitch. It was so nice to come to a place where you felt wanted, where you felt like you were appreciated, that they were happy to be there and happy to serve for us. And we were happy to be able to have our people come to your facility, and nothing but compliments, which was rare in the last year. So, thank you guys so much for allowing us to use that facility, appreciate it.
Kathy Miller, Principal of Valley Elementary, a leader in me school. I have some peeps out here, got to tell you. I have a confession, that was the first time that I had been to the Y-PAC Center since it opened up. And, first of all, Megan, you guys were amazing, and it was just an outstanding event. Fifth graders, I had all but one family show up, and that's impressive. I don't know, what do you guys think? We need to do it again, don't we? Yeah, we do. So, thank you so much. We were honored to be able to participate in that, and you know what? We didn't have to clean up, and that was amazing, so thank you.
I'd like to echo, I'm Frank Tucci, the Principal of Green Valley and also the K-8 Independent Study School in town. I'd like to echo the sentiments too. Megan was great to work with, she met me here, I met our team here, along with the Y-PAC Center team, to kind of make some court, you know, planning the event out. And I couldn't ask for anything more as far as a great partnership, but that's just what we expect here in our city, which is awesome. We were able to add and expand the number of people to attend our events. Our facility is a small one, and typically, graduation's been done in the grass, it's been difficult for some elderly family members. So we were able to, hey, as many people as you want, bring them in. We were able to have seating, which was great, they were able to visit some of the restaurants and things uptown. So, I just thought it was a great partnership, I'm very grateful for Megan's team, and just this partnership between our school district and the city, so thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Bert, we just want to say to Megan's team and all of you, we hope you love us as much as we love you, because we really enjoyed the whole Y-PAC adventure. And many of our families, as they said, had not been there before, so we hope it opens up opportunities for more families to attend for other reasons. So thank you very much, and Megan, thank you for your team, thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you. Kelly, Kelly, if I could ask you to come back up here, I have another quick presentation for you. And I'm going to ask Councilmember John Thorpe to read our presentation.
We have a proclamation this evening for Superintendent Kelly Banks, Binks, sorry. Whereas Kelly Binks embarked on her educational journey as a classroom teacher in Fontana Unified School District, eventually leading the district as superintendent for five years. After having dedicated over 20 years in the community, Kelly moved to Ucaipa in July of 2013, where she would serve as superintendent for the Ucaipa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District, and whereas Kelly has continued to serve the community in this capacity for eight years. And whereas Kelly actively participates in the community in a variety of capacities throughout her leadership in the Ucaipa-Calamasa Joint Unified School District, as a dedicated member of the Rotary Club, a co-founder, board member of the Family Promise of Ucaipa-Calamasa, providing support for families facing homelessness and hunger, and a commissioned leader representing the East Valley region during the COVID-19 pandemic. Her involvement was instrumental in making vaccines available for educators and students. And whereas her many years of service have been performed with dedication to her stated mission to make a difference to the life of each child. Kelly participated with our community leaders to provide scholarships to high school seniors to attend the University of Redlands. And whereas Kelly has been recently recognized as the Superintendent of the Year of Region 12 by the Association of California School Administrators. And whereas, in the words of Jennifer Isaac, who nominated Kelly for this Stand for Something Award through the Ucaipa Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, "Every day, she leaves everyone feeling just a little stronger for being in her presence." And, now therefore, be it resolved that City Council of Ucaipa, City Council, sorry, that the City Council of the City of Ucaipa, and on behalf of the citizens, does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Kelly Banks for her dedication, active, and dedicated service to the community of Ucaipa.
So how lucky are we that we have the sheriff and an award-winning superintendent all at the same meeting, right?
May I?
Please.
Thank you so much, so very unexpected. I just appreciate this community, and I know this past 18 months has been incredibly hard. Everyone's leading in a new era, and we're all trying to do our best for us. I know we're trying to do best for our kids, you're doing the best for the community. I admire all of the leadership in this room, it's not been easy, but I just appreciate living in this community, it's a great place to be. We love each other regardless, we spend time in helping others, and I just am honored that you would give me this proclamation, I'm going to hang it on my wall.
Well, we would like to have our picture with you.
I would love a picture. And I have to tell my team, I didn't know, I didn't drag you out here for this.
My third time up tonight. So this is Sergeant Daniel Helmick. Sergeant Helmick's been employed by the Sheriff's Department for 19 years, worked a couple of our larger jails as both deputy and as a sergeant. He worked patrol out at the Morongo Basin Station, mostly in the contract city of Yucca Valley. During his time on patrol, Daniel was a field training officer for many of new deputies coming out to patrol. He was promoted to detective and sent to a fairly new thing at the time, the high-tech crime detail, where he provided computer and cell phone forensic analysis to not only our department, but surrounding agencies as well. He remained in high-tech crime detail until being promoted to sergeant, and was then assigned to the Central Detention Center, where he's been for the last four years. Daniel was in the United States Marine Corps, stationed at Camp Pendleton in 29 Palms. He was deployed for Desert Shield, Desert Storm, as well as Operation Restore Hope in Somalia, before leaving active duty. His educational goal is to finish chasing his bachelor's degree in cybersecurity. He's married for the past 30 years, and has two sons and a daughter. His hobbies include, in his off-time, glamping and riding jet skis. He also likes to work on his photography skills and dabbles in website design. So Sergeant Dan Helmick. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, residents of Ucaipa, thank you very much, first off, for the support that you show to us in law enforcement. It makes our job a little bit easier, knowing that we have your support, all right? And I'd just like to say that I'm excited to work here in Ucaipa and provide safety to the city and to its residents. Thank you.
Hey, Sergeant Helmick? Sergeant Helmick? Real quick, I just want to comment on the character of the man who's now one of our watch commanders in the city. As it was mentioned by Captain Williams, he did train new puppy dog deputies in Yucca Valley, myself included. The patience displayed by a law enforcement officer is one of the most paramount characteristics of law enforcement, to be able to be patient in the face of controversy and hostility. And I've seen the man demonstrate patience when a young rookie deputy rolled his training officer's finger up in the window. It was an accident, I didn't mean to. We're so happy you're here, then thank you for coming to Ucaipa, and the leadership you're going to provide our city, I know it's going to be second to none, and we're just very happy you're here. Thank you. Yeah.
I say we keep going with the presentations, they're a lot of fun, right? Unfortunately, we have to move on to other parts of the agenda. Ray, are there any changes to the agenda that we need to know about?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, staff would respectfully request that item number five be pulled from consent and moved to the first department report this evening.
Item five?
Item five.
Okay. You guys okay with that? All right.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So that takes us to public comment, I do have a number of speakers. The limit is, just so you guys know, that we have a time limit of three minutes. So, you'll see the light, and I think it turns, it turned yellow, like the last 30 seconds, so you'll know that you'll need to wrap it up soon, so. My first speaker is Eric Stalter? Eric, if you could tell me where you're from, then go ahead.
Ucaipa.
All right.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council, staff, and sheriff. We want to let you guys know that we support you, your community supports you, and thank you. My name is Eric Stalter, I am the founder of the Liberty Lab, it's a community organization. Our community motto is uniting communities in a positive way. It was founded just last year, it's almost a year old, we're expecting to have our first birthday party on August 29th. We're not just about patriotism, we are about community. We do this every Sunday, we have the children do the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a prayer, we have some announcements, we have a constitutional reading, and then we go through a patriotic drive throughout the city. And we touch, every city street is the goal here in this community, and to grow to other communities. Just so you know, the City of Beaumont has also invited us, so we're starting a new lap out there in support of their city, their community, and their police as well. I'll give you our core values, they are community focus, family core values, non-divisive patriotism, support for law enforcement and first responders and veterans. I'm going to have to flip my thing, constitutional education, civic engagement, and raising community leaders. Why the Liberty Lab works is because these people, these people here come out every Sunday to do something positive in their community. They're not looking to go spread around political ideals, they want to do something for the community. And I want to say this before I turn it over to the next speaker, we had one gentleman, and this is the group, the entire group, this is your community, guys. We had one gentleman come out on a whim and asked our lap to go by a local community member's house who'd recently lost their child. We had over 60 vehicles full of people in tears pulled up in front of these, our community member's home, and just gave them a little bit of love, a little bit of, you know, hope after they lost their child. So, that's what I just wanted to say, and I wanted to tell you it's because of these fine folks here, thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. So I have Jim Holden, and then after Jim Holden, I'll have a Todd Sudstrom? Sudstrom? Where are you from, Jim?
I am from Calamasa, but I've been a Ucaipa resident for 68 years. You're probably wondering why a 74-year-old senior citizen would be supporting and participating in the Liberty Lab. It's very simple, we believe in freedom.
Could you speak into the microphone?
We believe in freedom, we believe in liberty, and we believe in the community spirit. I've lived for 68 years in Ucaipa Valley, attended Dunlap School, its first year of operation. I was a graduate of Ucaipa High School in 1965 in the fifth graduating class. I played Little League Baseball in its first three years of existence in Ucaipa, coached Little League for nine years, ran the summer baseball clinic under George Leija, the former recreation director, for three years, substitute taught in the Ucaipa Joint Unified School District for three years, owned and operated SoCal baseball program for 12 years, given baseball lessons for 26 years up here. I'm currently an active member of the Ucaipa American Legion, and I'm a member of the Liberty Lab since its inception a year ago. An added note, my father was in the first induction class on the Wall of Fame in the City of Ucaipa, located on Oakland Road and the community center. I believe I have a fair understanding of what makes this town click, it's the people. Although the cosmetics of the town have changed drastically in the 68 years of living here, the quality of the people have not, as can be seen here. Very community-oriented, very supportive of their schools and their youth, willing to stand up when the community needs them. These are people that make up the Liberty Lab. They're not troublemakers, they're not people looking for a fight. These are young families who want the best for their kids. They probably have better things to do on a Sunday afternoon than drive around with flags flying out their cars, but they feel that it's important. To them, it's crucial for the future of their kids and themselves. My time on Earth is winding down. I want these moms and dads and their kids to have the same opportunities in life that I've had. There have been many issues in my 68 years of living here involving Ucaipa. Forming the Ucaipa School District, that was an issue. Incorporation, that was an issue. Big box stores coming in, that was an issue. Whether chicken ranches should be able to continue as they always have been. Through all these, people protested, they had their issues, they demonstrated, they even spoke before boards like this, everyone had their say. For or against, all were permitted to be heard. Ucaipa is small potatoes compared to some of the controversies in our nation. The American Nazi marches in front of the Jewish Holocaust survivors in Skokie, Illinois. The KKK marches in Washington DC in front of demonstrators that hated what the KKK had to say. The Black Panther March in the late 70s in Oakland. These were all issues that were not easy issues to deal with, they were controversies, but the Constitution gave them the right to do these things.
Thanks, Jim. I have to be the same for everybody, so, thank you, Jim. Great speech. Todd's, I want to say it's Sudstrom? Sunstrom? And then after Todd, we'll have Sandra Nunez.
Good evening, City Council and fellow Ucaipians. My name is Todd Sunstrom, I've lived in this wonderful town for 25-plus years. My wife's been in this town for 50-plus years. And had a business here in town, an auto parts store, for over 18 years. And we worked with the city, Parks Department, Fire Department, Street Department, and worked together. The city supported us, we supported the city. Anyway, and I'm just proud to live in this community. Just the family presence in this town is amazing when you are involved in something like the Liberty Lab or just any, many functions that happen, you just, it's so nice to come home. Wife and I can be traveling out of town, and I like to drive up the Boulevard uptown and just see this beautiful town that we live in, we're very fortunate. I became involved in the Liberty Lab in April, a week before Easter, and I was just blown away by the unity of the members, and basically what its, just what its core values are. The week before Easter, on my first lap, they, we, the, all the members ended up at the park and had an Easter egg hunt for the kids, and barbecue, and just family stuff, and just awesome, positive stuff. And I'm proud that we are supporting the Fire Departments and the Police Departments, and did a fundraiser for the fallen officer that lives here in town, for their family. We're doing a lot of positive outreaches for the schools, getting involved in that. We're getting more and more involved in supporting our veterans. And I've been just, I've become more and more passionate about this organization, and the more laps that I make. And just seeing that long line of American flags go down Bryant or down the Boulevard, it, goosebumps, every time. It makes me proud to be an American, and all the smiles and thank yous and thumbs up that we get of people standing in front of their houses and their businesses is just awesome. And we've even seen what we're pretty sure was a veteran stand out and salute us, you know? Doesn't get any better than that. Unfortunately, we have witnessed a small fraction, a very small fraction of percent of people that do not support what we're doing for different, we're not sure why, but we're here to clarify what we're about, we are not a Trump rally. We are not a Trump anything. I mean, we have our own views, and it's all about being American and giving thanks for our freedoms. And it's about the United States of America.
Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Todd. So we have Sandra Nunez, and af, after that, we have Stanford and Deborah Martin. Where are you from, Sandra?
I'm here from Ukeipa. I've been, we moved out here in 93. Hello, everyone. Sorry, this is my first time speaking in public.
You're fine.
Okay. The Liberty Lab to me represents unity, especially right now with everything going on. It makes me feel, it makes me feel good. It, I even get chills every time we run the lap. I even take PTO or whatever I have available to leave early on Sundays just to join the lap. It just, I feel nice knowing that there's still people with like the same beliefs and that show love for our flag and our country, also for our rights, that it should be left alone and not taken away. And also, we're very thankful for our veterans. Thanks to them, we still have a freedom that we have.
All right. Thank you, Sandra. Good job. Stanford and Deborah Martin, and after Stanford and Deborah, we'll have Scott Ward. Where are you guys from?
We're from Mentone, Redlands area. We've been out here since 2006, moved out here, and she graduated from Uvar. Ukeipa. Reason why I said that, because, you know, growing up as a person of color, when we first came out here, they were saying, oh, Ukeipa is full of a whole lot of different type of folks other than what we see. I don't see no racism, no nothing here. These people from the Liberty Lab invited us in, me and my wife, and we've been loving on them for about eight, nine months, and they love on us. Here's the thing. If we don't sit down and reason together and come together and understand each other as a person of color and American and lay aside our values, understand each other, I have seen nothing but core value, supporting our military, supporting our city council, the police department. You know, I went one day, and just going to shorten it up, to San Bernardino. Don't know nothing about San Bernardino, but I went there, and I was wearing this hat. You see what my hat say on the back? Gentleman inside of a store said, and he's a person of color like me, I ought to knock that hat off his head. And I politely turned around and said, if you knock my hat off my head, I might knock your head off because you don't infringe on what I believe. I support the police. I support the Fire Department. I support the council. I support the military. I still got four children in the military. So these people here, except me and my wife, for us to come in, people of color. We're all Americans. We all love God. God first and then country. I'm going to let my wife say a few things.
I am very happy to be a part of the Liberty Lab. And like my husband said, we were accepted with open arms. They're my family now. We look forward to meeting up with our group. And I think, I think God brought us together because how would we know about Liberty Lab? We were invited, and we just continued, continued to come, and we're very proud and happy. I can't think of anything peaceful than riding around in your car with an American flag to be proud of. So I'm happy to be a part of the Liberty Lab.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, after Scott Ward, I have Callie, but I think she's finished, so. Go ahead, Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council and.
Where are you from, Scott? I have to ask everyone.
I actually live in Ukeipa, believe it or not. I am a resident of the community. I'm here tonight on behalf of San Bernardino County Third District Supervisor Dawn Rau. What a great day in the city. Put the new fire engine into commission, this great turnout tonight for the meeting. So I want to remind everybody that is here and that can hear this online that San Bernardino County is presently in the midst of a redistricting process. Every 10 years, the county uses new census data to redraw its supervisory district lines. This is to reflect local population shifts, anything that may have changed that might require a boundary to change to better represent where the population is. So I want to extend an invitation to all county residents, whether you're living in Ukeipa or if you're listening to this and you're in another part of the county. I would like to invite you to attend any of the upcoming meetings of the Advisory Commission. It is a, the, the redistricting Advisory Commission is a citizens' commission. There's no elected officials, no government employees on it. This commission, these people applied because they felt this was important. They wanted to serve on it. So we'd like citizens to get involved, too. There are 16 meetings scheduled between now and December. Next one is coming this Thursday in Apple Valley, but those in this chamber and hearing my voice will most likely be most interested in the meeting that is scheduled for Wednesday, September 15th, which will take place in this very room at 10 o'clock that morning. But you don't even have to attend in person. You can actually watch the meetings. Streaming videos are available at the official commission website. That's sbcountyredistricting.com. Everything you need to know about the whole process is on that website, so I'll repeat it, sbcountyredistricting.com. Thank you to Jennifer and the great city staff for coordinating with the county staff for the use of this chamber. So that said, I will look forward to seeing you September 15th. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. All right, so that, I think that finishes public comment. Jennifer, are there any others? No, we're good. Okay. So that takes us to our consent agenda, and I know we have removed item number five from the consent, so items one through 11 minus number five.
I move approval.
I'll second.
So a motion and a second. Oh, for the record, I will be abstaining from item number one. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that's going to take us to mayor and council business reports. Do you guys have anything before we start moving forward?
I just want to say thank you for everybody who came to the Ukeipa rodeo this last weekend. It was an amazing turnout. And I loved seeing all the, all the kids out there just enjoying the agricultural community that we all love and live in.
Bob, you have anything?
That's all I have.
Yeah. It was an amazing rodeo. David, you have something? No. John? You good? All right, so that's going to move in right along. This takes us to item number 12. We're going to take item five in the department reports, correct? Okay. So item number 12, which is the appointment of the Viticulture Area Planning Committee member. Go ahead, Ben.
All right. Thank you all, mayor and city council members. As the city council is aware, we are kind of knee-deep in the Phase Two AVA process as part of the committee to help address kind of the land use elements as part of that planning effort. We do have a planning committee that does feature three at-large members. One of the members, Daniel Morgan, did resign effective June 23rd, 2021. And so with that, the city did publish an advertisement for those that would like to participate. One had been received prior to that resignation from Caesar Roldan, and then one application was received from Denise Work. Want to note just quickly for council's reference that both Denise as well as Sesar had been attending the Phase Two meetings, and certainly I think everyone is excited for those meetings to continue on. And with that, that concludes my presentation for who had submitted service applications.
All right, so we have two applicants. We have Denise and Caesar. Is there any suggestions?
I'd like to nominate Denise Work as a representative. I think her experience, intelligence, thoughtfulness, and ability to, to grasp the subject. She has all the experience as a, as a planning commissioner. I think we would be remiss if we did not take her, her abilities into the fold here. I think that's, that's, that's a very, very important. I think it's, I think she would do perfect for us. Provide us with the insights.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept Denise Work. Anything else?
I, I would like to nominate or motion for Caesar Roldan's appointment to the AVAPC for the same reasons that Councilman Avila motioned for Denise's appointment. His experience and hard work, his technical know-how of vineyards and the AVA specifically, I think will do well on the AVA Planning Commission. I believe there, if I'm not mistaken, and unfortunately my iPad's not cooperating with me, but there might already be a planning commissioner on the AVAPC, and if I'm wrong, then I apologize for that, but I, I, with that, I, I move that we appoint Caesar Roldan.
Okay. Well, currently we have a motion for Denise in a, in a second, so I have to take that one first. So let's, motion and a second. Any further discussion in regards to Denise? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Me.
So is that a?
Four to one.
Four to one? Okay. All right, so I guess we accept Denise Work. All right, so that takes us to item number 13. I'm a little slow here.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to help me, when do we do the parcel map? That's been, that's been postponed.
I was going to do it when we get to department reports. So right before item 14.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So item number 13, I believe this is Jennifer.
Actually, I'm going to pass it to attorneys now.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I'll be presenting this in part because Mr. Casey, as a party to this agreement, is unable to participate in the negotiations, so I'll, and so City Attorney's Office prepares these agreements in light of the 1090 issue. As detailed in the staff report, this is a Ninth Amendment to the City Manager's contract. The current contract ended in July of this year, and this contract would extend that agreement for two more years. It would end on June 30th, 2023. There's a cost of living adjustment of 3.5% retroactive to the first full pay period in July, and an additional increase of 3.5% effective the first full pay period of July 2022. That's consistent with the increases that the other employment group, employee groups received this year as well. There are additional modifications that are detailed in the staff report, again, consistent with what was agreed upon with the other employee groups. And based on that, we're recommending approval of Amendment Number Nine of the City Manager's Employment Agreement, consistent with the other employees, and adoption of Resolution 2021-49, which would include the City Manager's adjusted compensation on the management supervisory and confidential salary schedule. And staff's available for any questions.
So are there any questions for staff?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that takes us to, that takes us to possible action on pending legislation. Ray, do you have anything?
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Well, one positive thing is the legislature has been out for the last month, so. I can report that. Okay, so that takes us to department reports, and we're going to go ahead and jump to item number five.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. This item is regarding approval of final parcel map number 20232, which proposes to subdivide a 0.95 acre parcel into four parcels on Third Street between Avenue H and County Line Road. Staff is proposing that the recommendations listed on the agenda report be revised by deleting recommendation number two, which is regarding acceptance of an easement. After further review, staff has found that this easement has previously been accepted by city council. So staff's recommendations for this item are that city council approve final parcel map number 20232 and authorize the recordation of the map from McFadden Properties LLC. That concludes my report.
All right. Are there any questions for staff? David, you have something?
No, I, I don't.
No. Justin, you have something?
No, sir.
No. So are we, are we only approving item one and three? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
And not item number two?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. So.
I'll move approval of items one and three of, of agenda item number five.
All right.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept items number one and number three. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so that's going to take us back to item number 14, which are law enforcement services. And I know we're going to break this down into two different, two different ways because I know one, one council member has to recue, so how are we going to do this, Ray?
We would start, perhaps start with the contract first and allow the council member the opportunity to recuse himself from that item and then invite him back for the second item.
Okay.
All right, so I'll recuse myself from this item number one due to my course of employment insurance warrant.
All right. All right. Go ahead, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item is a contract amendment to the Sheriff's Service contract for the city of Ukeipa to provide police services. It is the 36th Amendment. The city, of course, has had a longstanding relationship with the Sheriff's Department relative to our police services, and this is Amendment Number 36. It also includes the budget enhancements or the enhancements that city council prioritized in the goals and objectives process associated with the budget, which included one additional deputy and one additional, one additional sheriff's service specialist. The total contract amount, including those enhancements, is $11,838,869, less an annual personnel credit in the amount of $608,375. And that is for the services provided to the surrounding county jurisdictional areas out of our police station, some of Mentone, Oakland, Forest Falls, Angeles Oaks, et cetera. And so those credits amount to $608,375 for our contract. And then positions starting September 15th, because with the new, new positions, it requires the execution of the contract by us and then the execution of the contract by the Board of Supervisors, so there's a credit in the amount of $42,992 associated with that timeframe. So the net contract amount for this fiscal year is $11,187,502, $187,502 for this fiscal year. That net increase is reduced because the city council also approved an additional deputy at mid-year earlier this calendar year, and so that total increase amount is $343,033. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
All right, so are there any questions in regards to item number one of the agenda?
I don't have any questions, but I think I want to just point out, it's been said a few times here this evening from our, our county sheriff, I know our mayor said it. While cities across this country have defunded their police in the last year, Ukeipa has increased our policing budget by almost a million dollars. We put public safety at the top of our priorities. With that, I'll, I'll move approval for number one.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve item number one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so now we're going to review and approve the police department's mid-year report. It's all yours.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. I'm here to give you our 2021 mid-year report. As you know, my name is Robert Warwick. I'm the lieutenant at the Ucaipa Police Department, meaning I'm second-in-command after Captain James Williams. As you know, I arrived in May of this year, but I'd like to summarize the first half of the year and some of the things that we've been doing with your support. So as was just referenced by the City Manager, we have recently been approved for a couple of positions. But as of the first half of the calendar year, we had 44 total positions at the Ucaipa Police Department. As you can see, what's highlighted in red, with your approval, we've added an SSS position, as well as a deputy sheriff, which we anticipate arriving on September the 25th, which will give us a total of 46 sworn positions for the Ucaipa Police Department. One of the issues that continues to be problematic here in the city of Ucaipa is traffic. And I think everyone can relate to that. There has been encouragement from Captain Williams on down to our staff to increase enforcement and do everything that they can to prevent these injury and sometimes fatal traffic collisions. So with your approval, we added a second deputy traffic position on May the 1st. And as evidenced here in this first graph, you can see where our traffic citations... And again, this is mid-year, so this is gonna be January 1st to June 30th of 2019, '20, and '21 respectively. As you can see, we've increased 892 citations. And really, we just have that second traffic position for May and June. So I'm really looking forward to coming back to you with the next report after we've had that second traffic deputy position for a while showing the increases. You know, the fines for running red lights and speeding throughout the city are hefty, and they're that way for a reason, because we wanna keep everybody safe. So I anticipate those numbers continuing to rise. If you look at the second graph, you can see the traffic collisions. It's problematic. They've increased from 86 to 93 to 119 as far as non-injury... Or excuse me, non-injury and property damage only. But what's more concerning is the injury and fatal traffic collisions. There's people that fly around this city, and we're gonna do everything that we can to slow them down. Next, I'd like to talk to you about our Quality of Life position. As you know, here in the city of Ucaipa, we have a deputy sheriff assigned as a Quality of Life deputy. Right now, that is Deputy Alicia Rosa. And it's been, as you can see from the numbers there, it's been extremely beneficial. We've had 431 calls for service with Deputy Rosa. Again, this is a six-month period. But Deputy Rosa typically works 40 hours a week, which means other deputies certainly carry on some of the issues that are brought to Deputy Rosa's attention as we deal with homeless in the city and some different issues that we are trying to work on to make it better for our residents and our business owners. So the Quality of Life position has been responsible for 28 crime reports, 12 new homeless contacts, 28 arrests, a search warrant. Four of those homeless individuals were sheltered, and we were able to remove six encampments in the last six months. Next is our Multiple Enforcement Team. Multiple Enforcement Team, we generally use these two deputies. Depending on what's going on in the city, we send them toward issues that have been brought to our concern. They go out and they go get guns, and they go get drugs, and they are extremely good at what they do. In the last six months, they've handled 351 calls for service, taken 95 crime reports, made 62 arrests, assisted probation with four criminal investigations, conducted 12 search warrants, and assisted the gang team with three search warrants. And as you can see, they worked with our city radio operator training, and I'll cover that in more detail here in a minute. But this is two deputy sheriffs, and this can show you with what you've supported and provided our police department. When we have deputy sheriffs who aren't going from call to call, they can focus on problem areas, take guns off the street, get guns off the... Excuse me, get drugs off the street and make it safer. Next, we also have a deputy sheriff assigned full-time to Adult Protective Services and Children and Family Services referrals. As you can see, in six months, Ucaipa Police Department alone has received 273 referrals from either APS or CPS. Typically, back in the day when I was on patrol, and I think the way a lot of cities and stations still run it is these are farmed out to different deputies. And in between calls, they have to find time, whether it go to school, go to homes, to conduct these investigations. Children and elderly are some of our most vulnerable potential victims out there. And this police department has a deputy sheriff who does this full-time. He has a great relationship with the Children's Assessment Center, as well as members of our education facilities, all the different schools, the superintendent, so that he can get better results and not have to worry about getting bounced from call to call. Now, if there's an emergency referral, it goes to whatever deputy is available and the closest, and we go do what we can to get that adult or that senior out of harm's way. But the follow-up in the day-to-day cases, we give to one of our high-performing deputies who's acting in an acting detective role, who fulfills this mission. As you can see, he's conducted... Of those referrals, once you go through them, he's conducted, determined 66 of those at least warranted a criminal investigation, has been to the Children's Assessment Center five times, and has authored and served six search warrants. Next is traffic enforcement. As you can see from one of the first charts that I showed you, when you look at traffic collisions in this city, these numbers are exciting to me. As somebody who also travels up and down Ucaipa Boulevard, Brian, to Oak Glen and see how fast people drive here. So in the last six months, we've had 541 traffic stops, 434 traffic citations, 53 parking citations, 29 non-injury traffic collisions, eight injury traffic collisions, 21 unlicensed drivers arrested, and nine other arrests. As you can see, in addition to their regular duties, we're also performing with some grant money DUI enforcement. Next is our School Resource Officer, which is about to become very relevant again here in a couple of days when school starts. I had the opportunity to talk to Superintendent Callie Binks a couple of times over the last couple of weeks. And she, both times, she praised Deputy Wedge, who we currently have in that position. Because of his rapport with the teachers, he understands the mission, and he's able to relate to the students very well. So in the last six months, as you know, students were not, primarily not on campus. So Deputy Wedge handled, still handled 407 calls for service as it relates to the school and his duties as an SRO. He conducted 77 home visits, which means he got with administration staff from the schools here in Ucaipa, people who were having a hard time logging on Zoom, making sure those kids are okay, people who the teachers red-flagged as somebody who might need to be visited at home because either they're not learning, they don't have access, things like that. So Deputy Wedge, because of the relationships he has with the school, would partner up, and they went and made 77 different home visits. He went, he did 158 school visits, even though most of them weren't in session. He was regularly at all of our campuses, and he has developed a plan along with some of our other deputies here for day one and the first few days of school to be present at our schools to make sure parents who haven't dropped off children at that school or haven't done it in a while do so in a safe manner. And as you can see, there were three arrests. Only one of those was a student for vandalism, and two of them were on school grounds with adults, non-students, non-violent arrests. Next is our proactive enforcement. So back in February, in response to concerns from residents and business owners, we gathered up 17 deputies and detectives, not only from here in Ucaipa, but from Highland, Central, and I believe Ranchakukamunga Station. And we went out for a night and just targeted people with drugs and guns. We made 26 arrests and confiscated a bunch of drugs, drug paraphernalia, and weapons. Next is our social media. As you know, when I introduced myself to you guys a couple of months ago now, I came from our Public Affairs Division, and I am a firm believer in being part of the community. We don't simply wanna be the law enforcement arm of Ucaipa. This works best when we engage with one another. One way that we're getting better and better at is via social media. So what we've done is, when we make some of these great arrests, do good investigations, and things, significant events happen here in the city, we're actually showing those who give us a follow on Twitter and Instagram and Facebook who the deputies are behind that, who the deputies are who are making that extra effort, who are getting those guns off the street and keeping your families safe. So we're gonna continue to do that. It's our primary way of reaching out and letting people know what we do. But we also have some things in mind, probably in a council meeting or two. I'm gonna be back delivering a strategic plan to you guys, and I'll tease you with the fact that we have a whole bunch of in-person events in the hoppers, open house at the station, a Ucaipa PD 101 class that we're developing for members of the community who wanna come in and find out what happens inside the station and when the deputies are out patrolling when they're sleeping. So we're gonna invite community members to come see what, more of what we do, and I think that's gonna really help that relationship. This is Deputy Alicia Rosa, as most of you know, and she is the Quality of Life deputy. Here what she's pictured, back in June 22nd through the 24th, we conducted a three-day radio traffic. The city of Ucaipa was very progressive in making sure that the code enforcement officers, as well as park rangers, had access to our 800 megahertz radios. They're often out in parks and in areas where cell phone service can't work. And as you can imagine, if you're out struggling with someone in a dangerous situation, picking up a telephone and dialing, trying to get a deputy sheriff out to your location, set a key and a microphone can be very dangerous. So they actually came into our police department. We conducted radio traffic to make sure they understand the radio etiquette, what to say to get people there in a hurry, some of the key phrases, things to look for when they're out in the parks and out in the community. And then actually had them come out and ride with our deputy sheriffs so that they can hear how a deputy sheriff uses the radio, how congested it can get on a busy Friday night. But also, more importantly, just so that they can get to know the deputies and the deputies can get to know them. It's gonna be important that they work hand in hand. We don't just want them out there carrying our radios. We wanna know who's on the other end. So when we hear that voice and we know them a little bit, as my fellow law enforcement officers on the council can relate, you can tell the way that somebody's talking on the radio, how fast you need to get there when they might be in trouble. So it's been a great program, and the ride-alongs went very well. We actually had some scenarios out back of the police department where we had role players and had them call as if it was a real call and let the rest of their peers, the rest of the class, hear what it sounds like on the other end. And then they all came back and critiqued each other. And by the end of the training, I think they're pretty efficient, and they're only gonna get better. Back in April, we did a volunteer recruitment return. And this is another thing coming from my public affairs background that we're really gonna bolster here at Ucaipa. Our Ucaipa, all of our volunteer units were shut down during COVID. And now that we're coming out of COVID, and I know there's some complications, this department cannot survive without its volunteers. We, as the Sheriff's Department, have 2,000 volunteers between search and rescue, explorers, citizens on patrol, mounted posse, reserves. We couldn't do our job without them. So to have that missing didn't just sting department-wide, but it really stung here in Ucaipa. We have a community that likes to be involved, and there's no reason that we shouldn't have dozens of citizens on patrol and, you know, a bunch of explorers. So back in April, we held a recruiting event outside of City Hall, and we got a few applications. It does take a background investigation, so some of those are still being processed. But I think we got a few new search and rescue members. What we hope with the upcoming open house event that I described and the Ucaipa PD 101, or whatever we end up calling it, is when we get people in and we show them what we do at the police department. And, you know, if they have enough interest to come see what we do, maybe there's somebody in the community who's willing to give back and donate some hours, and we'd like to put some of them to work. So we're really hoping to bolster those numbers. Back in May, a couple of weeks after my arrival here, we got to go out with the Ucaipa Little League and play with their challengers division. We love getting out into the community. This is a division with people with some physical and mental disabilities and play softball. Again, it doesn't, we don't do our job as well if we're simply that law enforcement arm who you just called when things are really, really bad. When we can establish these relationships, when things are good, and especially with that vulnerable community, let us know, hey, these are the same guys who have the badges and carry the guns. We wanna be your friends. We're here for you. I think those things go a long way, not just to the disabled people playing, but to the parents and all the other families that are there, you know, for Little League games in the park. I think it sends a good message, so we're gonna be doing more of that. In April, we also had a citizen volunteer academy. And I'm happy to report that we have two new citizens on patrol that graduated from that academy that was held at our Highland Station. And you've probably seen, it's hard to tell with the masks, but they've been out at National Night Out. They were up at the Music Festival back in May and some of the other events here in the city. And then the community support. This is one thing I think law enforcement that works in fine cities like this really felt during all of the social unrest. We'd have people coming by the station, whether it's bringing goodies, just wanting to say thank you. Here in Ucaipa, it's like nothing else. There's about 40 of me within the Sheriff's Department, and I talk to my peers regularly. And now that things have somewhat died down as far as the social unrest, a lot of that has gone away in other areas. It's like after 9/11, and everybody put their flags up. And as soon as those flags got a little bit withered and the newness of 9/11 went away, it was business as usual in some communities. And that is not the case here. At least a couple of days a week, Captain Williams and I are greeted in the lobby by somebody wanting to come by for a tour, just to say hello, to bring deputies, or excuse me, to bring goodies or to thank the deputies. So this is something that we see at least a couple of days a week at our station. And I've never, I've been on for about 22 years. I've never worked anywhere like it. So this is nothing that we're doing. This is things that your community are doing, but it makes it a heck of a lot nicer to work here when you feel appreciated by fine members of the community like this. So with that, that concludes my mid-year report, and I'm available for any questions.
Great report, by the way. Very thorough. You guys have any questions for Sergeant?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. LT, the running theme in your presentation is something what I really liked hearing, and that is community involvement. And that's what Ucaipa is. We are involved with our law enforcement. We love you guys. We really support you. And I think, I'm telling the city of Ucaipa now, that we need to engage even more. Community policing. If you see something, say something. Get involved. We have several volunteer organizations or groups, COPS, explorers, mounted posse, even the reserve officers. These are all things that we can do to help ourselves. Our community is only as strong as we let our police be as strong. And if we take a stand and say, not my neighborhood, not my street, and then to prove that not my street, I am gonna call for reinforcements. I think our community needs to be aware, or the bad guys need to be aware, that our community supports our police department and that we are willing to say something if we see something. And that is the best that we can do as a community. But, and you guys do your part, we do our part, and we will continue to have the second safest community in the sheriff's system, and only because Chino Hills is number one, but they're all gated. You know, it's easy. We got open streets.
We're gonna be first. It's gonna happen.
It's, we are going to be first. It's gonna happen. I don't doubt that. But we need community support and community involvement. So thank you for what you guys do. I really appreciate it. And as Councilmember Bieber says, we are gonna be the safest community. I am sure of it. I think we have a wonderful, we have wonderful administrators, wonderful leadership, Captain Williams and ULT. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything? You good? Is everyone good? Okay. Awesome. Great presentation. So we do need a motion and a motion for...
I'll move approval for item number two.
Right, I remember. All right, so we have a motion and a second?
All second.
And a second? Any, I keep saying this. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's been a little while since I've done this. All right, so that takes us to item 15? And I believe this is Jason.
It is me. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. The item before you is for Arctic Wolf Cybersecurity Services. One responsibility of the Information Systems Division is to manage the city's cybersecurity posture by reducing or preventing risks to the network, computer devices, and the city's data. This usually, this work usually entails utilizing standard IT industry tools such as anti-malware, software, firewalls, email spam protection, identity management, and multi-factor authentication, which we do most of. multi-factor authentication, which most, we do most of now. It also requires adherence to procedural administrative and administrative best practices. And while the city has not experienced a significant, significant cybersecurity incident to date, due diligence is required to reduce the risks or the impacts of future incidents. It's no longer a matter of if a breach or malware attack or phishing event will occur, but more about having tools in place to alert staff when those events do occur, occur, and having a plan in place to return operations to a normal operational state within a reasonable timeframe. And I think Mr. Beaver knows quite well how that, how that can affect a, a city or a municipality. Staff has researched several cloud-based cybersecurity service providers and concluded that Arctic Wolf Networks Cybersecurity Services offers the most complete suite of cybersecurity tools to meet our city's needs. Adding Arctic Wolf Networks to the slate of IT tools at the city of Ucaipa will give our staff much more insight into what's going on with the city's network and infrastructure. It builds the foundation for building a robust, a robust infrastructure that will be difficult to, be difficult to penetrate. While there's no proof, a full-proof cybersecurity solution, Arctic Wolf Services strengthens the city's cybersecurity posture and gives staffs the means to monitor and respond to any anomalies that may occur on the city network within minutes, which is very, very important. So with that, staff is recommending that council approve and authorize the purchase of Arctic Wolf Network's cybersecurity services from Savant Solutions in an amount not to exceed $130,357 over three years, and direct staff to include $42,000, $52 for year two and year, sorry, for year two and $44,155 for year three and future budgets to accommodate the ongoing annual costs. And also to find the public interest will not be best served by a formal proposal process, waive the formal solicitation of proposals and qualifications, and award the purchase of Arctic Wolf Networks cybersecurity services to Savant Solutions. Lastly, we included a terms and solutions agreement in your packet late before the meeting. We'd like to add that we authorize a city manager in conjunction with the city attorney to finalize the terms of that agreement and execute the solutions agreement, which was included in your, in your packet. We did that in lieu of a professional services agreement.
So we'll need to amend our motion to accept?
Yes.
Okay.
Fiscal impact here. Let me get that for you. There's currently a balance of $50,000 included as a service level option for cybersecurity in the fiscal year 2122 adopted budget. Allocating the amount of $44,150 for year one of the contract will leave a remaining balance of approximately $5,850. And staff will include $42,052 for year two and $41,155 for year three and future budgets to accommodate the ongoing annual costs contingent on council's approval of this item. That concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So are there any questions for staff? Justin, you have anything?
No, this stuff's important, so.
You have anything?
No question.
No. David, you good? All right, so we have a motion and we need to amend it with this contract here? Is that the way it's working?
Yeah, the staff would recommend that you amend the motion to include the city attorney and city manager having some authority to make non-substantive adjustments to that contract that was distributed this evening, given the late, late date of the distribution.
All right.
All motion.
We have a motion with amendments?
It's a firm. Yep.
What's that?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. A second.
I told you, it's been a while. I haven't been up here in like six weeks.
I just couldn't say yes. I had to say affirm. You know, it's cop talk, sorry.
I'm slow.
Affirmative, ten-four.
I have to relearn this every time. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thanks, Jason. Are you moving on? Oh, you're the, doing the next one.
Next. I've got one more for you.
Yeah, item number 16.
Okay, this is for installation and support of cameras with Amtech Security, Total Security Inc., and also for maintenance on cameras with Amtech, Total Security, Inc. Since 2018, 51 Verkata cameras have been installed in various locations throughout the city. And over the years, these cameras have been instrumental in assisting Ucaipa Police Department in crime investigations. Due to increased criminal activity and traffic accidents in and around the Ucaipa Valley Center and Oakland Plaza shopping areas, YPD has requested that cameras be placed at the intersections of Ucaipa Boulevard and Oakland Road and Ucaipa Boulevard and Valley Circle to monitor traffic and some of the surrounding parking areas. Staff investigated these intersections and concluded that 15 additional cameras would be necessary to cover, to adequately cover these areas. Currently, city information systems staff performs maintenance and cleanings on the Verkata system cameras as needed or as problems occur. If approved, a total of 66 cameras will be on the overall system. And at this time, maintenance should become the responsibility of a vendor. These vendors are more equipped with the tools, bucket trucks, and personnel accustomed to working in high-traffic areas, which is where we're putting these cameras now. On May 19th, staff, May 19th, 2021, staff prepared a request for proposals and qualifications for this project and for maintenance on the existing and newly added cameras. Three responses were received and staff recommends the award to Amtech Total Security, Inc. of Chino, California. The city did receive a letter of protest from net experts stating that Amtech appears to only have presented a portion of the scope of work outlined and only one, not five years of service. The city attorney has reviewed the protest and found that according to published RFP section, to the public RFP Section 5C, this request for proposals does not commit the city to award a contract to pay any costs incurred in the preparation of the proposal in response to this request or to procure any contract for any services. The city reserves the right to accept or to reject in part any or in its entirety the request for qualifications if such action is deemed to be in the best interest of the city. And city staff has confirmed that Amtech, Amtech will in fact honor a five-year commitment at the pricing they offered, which meets the commitments of this RFQ, the requirements of this RFQ. The adopted fiscal year 2122 budget includes an allocation in the amount of $150,000 for ALPR and surveillance cameras. The amount of $67,918 was previously, previously encumbered for the geofence phase four project, leaving a remaining balance in, in the amount of approximately $82,082 for this project. Allocating the amount of $73,894 for the camera installations and for year one of the maintenance leaves a remaining balance of $8,188. Staff will include $9,000 annually for years two through five of the maintenance contract and future budgets contingent, contingent on council approval of this item. And with this, staff is recommending that council, actually, we, we're going to do something similar to the last one. We have some revisions that we want to make on the professional service agreement. So again, we're going to ask to approve and authorize the city manager in conjunction with the city attorney to finalize the terms and execute the agreement. And the city manager and/or is designated to administer the terms of the agreement with Amtech Security, Total Security, Inc. of Chino, California. In the amount of $9,000 annually for maintenance services on the city's 66 Verkata cameras and associated network devices for a term of 60 months and a total cost of $45,000 over five years. And direct staff to include $9,000 annually in future budgets to accommodate ongoing annual costs for years two through five of the contract. And approve and authorize the mayor to execute a contract. And the city manager is designated to administer the terms of the contract with Amtech Security, Total Security, Inc. of Chino, California, in the amount of $64,894 to furnish and install cameras and electrical and cellular services at the following locations of Ucaipa Boulevard and Oakland Road and Ucaipa Boulevard and Valley Circle. And lastly, to reject the bid protests from net experts. Dave, does that satisfy? Okay. I just want to make sure we didn't need to add anything else to that. That concludes this report and I'd again be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, so are there any questions for Jason? Staff?
I'll move approval to the agenda, item number 16, as stated by the Information Systems Manager.
Okay. Motion and a second. Do you have any comments or questions? Jason, I have one. Is all this information still piped into the city or is it piped into the police department?
Both. So these are the new camera systems and most of the deputies have access when they're usually, when new, new ones come on, I get asked to add them. So they would have access through their phones, which makes the system really valuable. We can't do that with our, with our legacy system. So we'll have 66 cameras that they would have at their fingertips. They can scan video, view live video, review video instantly from their phone with these cameras.
And so our LPR systems have gotten numbers of stolen vehicles and, and, do we have any numbers on what the camera systems have done? Do you have any idea?
Captain Williams, do you have any information on that?
If you don't, that's fine. That's, that's okay.
How about a lot? Would that be okay?
I'll pick on you next time when we talk about it.
Gotcha. Just as a side note too, we are going to add some LPR cameras to this system on those intersections as well. They, they're, they're not going to be tied into the Vigilant system, which is the national database. But after talking to PD several times, they would like to have just our own little database in that area to be able to, to do some forensic investigation. And we figured this would be a good spot to try that. So this does include some, some ALPR cameras that'll be watching the parking lot at Valley Circle. And I believe some ingress and egress traffic at the, both those intersections.
So right now, you're, you're requesting all that data from?
Yeah, that data, right now, that for the Vigilant, the, the larger, the geofence cameras, that, that goes to the national database.
Okay.
PD asks, and that works great, but we had an opportunity to look at these cameras that would be just kind of within our wheelhouse. They don't go to the national database, but it'll help in investigations.
Okay. Awesome. You have something you'd like to add or?
I was just going to mention, I, I don't have hard numbers for you, but I will say that the two systems actually work together. So you get a, when, when it trips an ALPR, you get a, one view, okay, it's southbound on Bryant. But then you use the camera systems to actually find that car. When it turns onto Ucaipa Boulevard, you can use the city camera systems to figure out where it's going and go get it. So the ALPR gives you like the one-time snapshot, okay, we've got a stolen car that just entered the city. Now we start using our sheriff service specialists, you, and deputies, but they use the city camera system to then find it because it's not there. It's, it tripped the ALPR, but it's moved on.
Right.
So now we've got to find it. We've got one in particular that's excellent at being able to track them through the, through the city and then we can make the recovery.
And we've, how many, we've, how many stolen vehicles have we recovered over the last few years? Is it in the hundreds?
I don't, I wouldn't say it would be in the hundreds, but it's.
Quite a few?
Yes, yes. It, it works regularly. I'll, I'll say it that way.
Right. Awesome. Thank you. So we do have a motion and a second? Who is the?
Councilmember Beaver gave the motion and Mayor Pro Tim Duncan gave the second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to item number 17, which is an audit report. And I believe this is for Ryan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good evening. This item before you is the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. And the recommendation is for a receive and file for said report. The city's auditors, Van Lant and Fankinell, have completed their audit work and issued an opinion on the financial statements for fiscal year 2019, 2020. They concluded there was a reasonable basis for rendering an unmodified or clean opinion and that the statements were fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. I'd like to point out just some general fund highlights for you. So for that, if I could draw your attention to your agenda packet, I believe it should be page 314. This is also, this would be page 18 of our comprehensive annual financial report. I just want to highlight the, the general fund total revenues for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020 were $26.8 million and total expenditures were $25.5 million, which is a total revenue over expenditures of $1.3 million. After you factor in the net of transfers in and out, the general fund total fund balance increased by approximately $5.3 million in the fiscal year. The total fund balance, you can see at the bottom of that general fund column, as of June 30th, 2020, is approximately $54.9 million. As a reminder, the general fund in the CAFER, these, these financial statements, does include the FIRE fund. As of a couple of years ago, the FIRE fund was combined with the general fund for, for reporting purposes. Though we do continue to track the FIRE protection activity separately throughout the year, they are combined for these financial statements. So we have invited Brett Van Lant from Van Lant and Fankinell to give a brief presentation regarding the audit and I'll turn it over to him now.
Somebody going to control the thing?
I got it, I got it for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brett Van Lant. I'm a partner with Van Lant and Fankinell. We conducted the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. And I have just a brief presentation of the audit reports and the additional reports that were issued as part of the audit. So most notably, the audit report, this is the opinion on the financial statements. This is where we are stating that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There's also the report on internal control and compliance, a report on the city's appropriations limit, a letter directly to the city council, just communicating our responsibilities, and also the single audit report. Some key figures in the financial statements. The net pension liability increased about $300,000 this year. This is an actuarially determined amount. The city, even though it pays the required amounts recommended by CalPERS, it, it still had an increase. The general revenues in the general fund exceeded the expenses by 1.3 million. The unrestricted fund balance in the general fund, this is just the assigned and unassigned, is approximately 40% of the fiscal year 20 expenditures, which is approximately five months reserves. GFOA, it's a Government Finance Officers Association, has a recommended best practice of a minimum of two months operating reserves. So that kind of gives you an idea of the city's reserves in accordance with those best practices. In addition, the city's net, or I'm sorry, net OPEB liability is approximately $2 million. These are, these are entity-wide liabilities that are not in the general fund itself, but I just wanted to kind of bring up some of these big, bigger numbers that are in your CAFER. And again, this is an actuarially determined calculation. The other report on internal control and compliance, this is a, a report that we are required to evaluate the city's internal controls over financial reporting. The purpose of that is to consider the procedures that we are going to do in our audit. We are not expressing an opinion on the internal controls of the city, but if we identify any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, other matters, or material non-compliance, we're required to report those to the city council. And so in our report, go to the next slide. There was three findings that we are reporting. Two of them were carryforwards from the prior year, things that the, the city is working on, I believe, for the most part, has already fixed them at this point. But one was a significant deficiency regarding the calculation of the building and planning fees. Another one was a, a material weakness. And this is, this is in regards to the accounting for capital, the funding sources for the capital projects and how they impact the accounting for the financial statements. And then also, an, an other matter where we are just making recommendations on the use of general fund advances. And in our reports, we have also included a section regarding management's response to those findings. And Ryan, you want to go through some of those?
Sure, thank you, Brett. Yeah, I just want to briefly note that these findings that he, he mentioned are as of June 30, 2020 and do not necessarily. and do not necessarily reflect any progress that staff has made in these areas since then, over the last year. As he mentioned, building and planning user fees, city staff has been, has put significant hours into reviewing those user fees. And in fact, council has already reviewed and approved numerous revisions to user fees to help us fix this issue. The funding sources for capital projects, again, since June thirtieth, twenty, we've, we've made big, big, big pushes for improved communication between accounting and development staff. The recent six million dollar reimbursement from SBCTA that we've discussed on more than one occasion was one of the results from those efforts. And as you know, the city is also regularly seeking additional grants and expedited reimbursement requests, though certain agencies do kind of give us regular delays, such as Caltrans. The, the third item that he mentioned, general fund advances, this is something that, that we have discussed. Staff does evaluate these regularly, ensuring compliance with the loan agreement that we have approved for these, for these diff loan repayments annually. And we are anticipating being able to make larger repayments for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, in part due to financing received from skip funding.
And I just kind of want to go back to that, the general fund advances. We're, we didn't present it as a significant deficiency or a material weakness. It's just presented for additional consideration for city council. And that, that kind of concludes my presentation. I would like to thank the city staff for their assistance in completing the audit. It's a kind of a, a two-way partnership in order to get it done, so I appreciate their help.
Thank you so much, Brett.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, no, Brett will hang out here for a moment. And so that includes, concludes our report, and we are available for any questions you may have.
All right, so are there any questions for staff? You have anything, John?
No.
You good? David? Bob? Justin?
I just wanted to note that a couple of things was this last year, even though with the pandemic and the COVID thing, operating revenues were one point three million over expenses. So that's, that's money, I don't want to say you put it in the bank, but I guess we do put it in the bank, right? So even, even with all the, the chaos and the crazy of the last year, we still have a good, a good budget. There are some things that we need to work on. And as Brett mentioned, building and planning fees, which I think is on tonight's, it's on tonight's. The way the sources are funded, that's where the four million comes from. And the general fund advances, which I think we've been working on for a couple of years now. We've been talking about it, so. I appreciate all that. I appreciate all your work. Great job. So with that, is there, is there a motion?
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I forgot to mention that the finance committee did review this item in detail today, this afternoon.
Yes, we did. So with that, is there a motion?
Actually, this is a receiving file.
So I guess we're done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. I always forget that. All right, so that takes us to item number eighteen. I guess this is for Todd.
Yes, both Todd Guchar and I will be presenting this item.
Okay.
I'll go to the first slide. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. In two thousand sixteen, the Trails and Open Space Committee created a mountain bike ad hoc committee to research the possibility of development of a mountain bike trail in the city of Ucaipa. The committee soon recommended the area east of Wildwood Canyon Park as an ideal location for the project. The project was identified as a single-track mountain bike trail located on thirty-three, thirty-three city-owned acres located southeast of Wildwood Park. If you can see from the map up on the, on the screen, this is the concept plan that was developed originally, got back in two sixteen, two thousand sixteen, seventeen. It is modified, and now the concept plan consists of three phases. Phase one is in the purple, phase two is in the red, and phase three is in the black. This has changed dramatically from one of the original concepts. The entrance was going to go a little bit further east on Wildwood Canyon Road. But however, right before construction, some of the hillside slope had deteriorated and slid due to recent rains. And the contractor was not able to do anything with that property because it was just basically a sheer cliff right down into the drainage. In May of two thousand nineteen, city council approved the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen mid-year budget review that included a serviceable option for phase one of the trail. Shortly thereafter, city council awarded the contract to Belfry Contractors for the design and development of phase one of the trail. In February of two thousand twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, city council approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-one mid-year budget review that included a serviceable option for phase two of the trail. As in March of this year, city council awarded the contract again to Belfry Contractors for the design and development of phase two of the trail. Next slide, please. If you can see, this is the most recent satellite photo taken via NERMAP and Google of phase one and phase two of the trail. This was as, as of May of this year. This is phase one. It does look a little bit different than the concept plan due to the fact that when the contractor was up designing and removing brush, he experienced some areas that he could not remove or manipulate. So he had to make some, some immediate changes to it. But this is the phase one and phase two that is currently available now. The length of the trail will be, for all three phases, will be over eleven thousand linear feet, which is approximately two miles. The current two-phase layout is over seventy-three hundred linear feet and includes features such as brim turns, rollers, jumps, and mountain bike trail features. Next slide. In April of two thousand twenty-one, the Trails and Open Space Committee was notified that the trail was awarded an honorable mention award by the California State Parks, Trails, and Greenways Project. This California State Park Trails and Greenways organization provides high-quality education and networking opportunities for urban, rural, and backcountry trail professionals. So this was a local award that was awarded to, to the project as an honorable mention. And to finalize, in August of this year, actually, this coming up Saturday, August fourteenth, Trails and Open Space Committee will be conducting a Wildwood Mountain Bike Trail grand opening at Wildwood Park, starting at eight-thirty. And copies of the invitations are in your packet, and the committee has already started to advertise the event.
Thank you, Todd. And regarding the fiscal impact, the total approved budget for phase, both phases one and two is in the amount of eighty-eight thousand. The total actual cost to complete phase one and phase two is eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. So there's sufficient funding available to accommodate staff's recommendation tonight, which is that, that city council accept the contract work, work completed by the contractor. And as mentioned earlier, for phase three, which includes about thirty-seven hundred linear feet of trail and two bridges, that work is estimated to cost approximately seventy thousand dollars. And staff will continue to work with the Trails and Open Space Committee and the local mountain bike groups to seek additional funding to complete phase three. And that may include fundraising, additional donations, and also grant funding as those opportunities arise. That concludes our report. And I just wanted to, again, just wanted to once again invite everyone to the grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony for this Saturday at eight-thirty AM at the project site. Thank you.
Awesome. So are there any questions or comments for staff?
I'd just like to say, this is another one of these quality-of-life projects. You know, this is what Ucaipa strives to do, is, is that we've got the festivals and we've got our open space, our parks. And this is just another addition, along with our horse trails and hiking trails. Now we have bicycle trails and just, you know, we're, it's just a nice... That's what makes Ucaipa so great. You know, it's just, it's just so wonderful that we have these opportunities for everybody. You know, citizens and visitors alike. Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually go mountain biking a couple of times a week. And if you go out behind Crafton Hills at any time, you'll see how there's, there's a lot of people back there out mountain biking and cruising around. It's a lot of fun. And it's really good for the kids, too. They have a mountain bike team. The high school has a mountain bike team. Good way to keep the youth active and out of trouble.
And the one thing about this trail is that if you're actually on site, a lot of the part, a lot of majority of the trail is not visible. It's still with, with the overhang and the drip line from the trees. It's still hidden, it's still shaded. But we've walked it a couple of times, and it is a very challenging, it is a very, very challenging trail from what a lot of people have said, so.
Did you get your bike yet?
No, I have not yet.
No. I'll be waiting.
All right.
All right. All right, so we have a, we have a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thanks, thanks, Todd. All right, so that's going to take us to item nineteen. And I'm not sure who's in charge. Ben?
All right, thank you, Honorable Mayor and city council members. This is kind of a follow-up of prior discussions that the city council has had. As you may know, the city has two property and business improvement districts, or P-bids. P-bids one and two, one is located on California Street between Ucaipa Boulevard and, and Avenue, or Second Street, and then the other one, or Avenue B. And then the other one is located on Ucaipa Boulevard between Second Street and Bryant Street. Through the years, the P-bid has operated. Part of the purpose of a P-bid is to collect essentially a special tax assessment on each individual property, which pays for certain activities that's identified in the property management plan. Most notable is kind of the enhanced land state features that are located along the Boulevard and along California Street, but also other elements such as the security, the irrigation and water bills, and kind of related improvements in that area. Now, over the years of implementing the, the P-bid, there is an MOU with the Uptown Association that serves as kind of the property owners, for lack of a better term, like an HOA kind of setup, that manages that and kind of oversees it with city participation. And then there's a MOU between the city and the Property Owners Association for the Uptown P-bids. Now, since implementing the MOU, this number of changes in board members and liaisons have occurred. And so some of the direction of that P-bid has kind of changed as well. And then ultimately, in kind of fall of two thousand twenty, there was some concern about the current P-bid organization and the associated liabilities that those board members may have, given that it's not a nonprofit organization. And so as part of those discussions, city council did discuss perhaps exploring the concept of disbanding the P-bid and in lieu, establishing a city uptown business district committee that could help address some of the uptown-related concerns, coordinating of city events and other large-scale activities that are happening in the uptown in lieu of having the P-bid itself. And then this concept was then presented to the P-bid, or the Uptown Association, in December of two thousand twenty. Since then, there was discussion about establishing a survey to get feedback from the business owners and property owners in the uptown about the disbanding. And then ultimately, the city council did direct staff to move forward with the survey. And then the special survey was also then presented to the uptown board, and they directed staff to move forward as well. As part of the survey distribution, two uptown association board members include specifically Mary Ruder and Ben Ma Safari. And then myself did want the uptown businesses and provided a link to the survey so that all business owners and property owners had a chance to participate. And then the survey results are attached for a city council review and were also provided to the Special Uptown Association meeting of July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. As part of the survey was to kind of twofold. One is to see kind of the status of the P-bid, the board membership organization, and how they're meeting the needs of the property and business owners. And then two, there was a question about the disbanding of the P-bid and getting some general feedback before that step is taken. Ultimately, as part of the survey results, they are attached for a city council review. Generally, a lot of the amenities are provided in the uptown, including the land state and security services are things that those entities valued, be it, be the property owners or business owners. However, there was some concern, as expressed in some of the fill-in comments, about the leadership of the uptown association. And certainly recognition, though, of Mary Ruder and her efforts to further engage property owners and business owners. But that, generally, there had been a discord of, of collaboration with that. And ultimately, the survey results, especially if you parse out the ones that are just property owners, did all recommend the dissolution of the P-bid. And so with that, that survey result was presented to the uptown association, and the board voted four to one to initiate the petition to disband. The actual process is kind of a two-step one, is actually sending out petition, looking for the majority vote, whether or not to maintain the P-bid or dissolve it. And then once that vote is carried out, then that would be the actual formal step moving forward. But with that, that does kind of include my presentation. But the uptown board did review and recommend that at least initiating the petition and seeing what the results are would be an important step. And then they also did iterate that a city-based committee, in lieu of the P-bid, if it is dissolved, would be helpful to maintain the dialogue of different happenings in the uptown.
All right. Thanks, Ben. Are there any questions or comments for staff in regards to the dissolution of the P-bid?
I have a question. This, this, this item says that the city council approved and direct staff regarding the circulation. Haven't we already done that? Haven't we already circulated with this, the voting and all that? Has that been done?
So the circulation in itself was the, the survey, just to see kind of what the status is of the P-bid, the association, how they're meeting the needs of the uptown. And then a question of whether or not there was interest in dissolving the P-bid. Using the feedback from those results would then help guide whether or not a formal petition to dissolve the P-bid would occur. That does have to occur on the anniversary, or kind of within the thirty days of the anniversary of each P-bid. And we are actually at that time period for those. Both P-bids have an anniversary date sometime in August. One is August eleventh, and one was later in the month. So this would be taking the actual formal step of mailing out via certified mail to the, the property owner, since they're the ones that pay the property tax assessment, to then whether or not they actually want to formally disband the P-bid.
I move that we do that right away.
I do, too. I'd like to echo his, his question. I didn't quite understand that either. I do have a concern, though. We, we have to make sure that we get a deadline, so, you know, folks don't drag their heels and, and we lose that window of opportunity there. Was it August thirteenth is, and then August thirtieth or something like that? We have two, two different P-bids?
Yeah, so one is August eleventh, and the other one is August twenty-seventh. So within thirty days of those anniversaries.
We want to make sure that we get the results back in time, so we're in that window.
Is a petition, is it necessary? If I'm looking at the survey correctly, seven of the eleven responded with favorable comments of disbanding. Is that not enough?
So it does have to be kind of a formal petition. The survey results itself were directed to both property owners and business owners. However, we did parse out the ones that were specifically property owners. And the majority or all of them did vote either somewhat interested or, or interested in dissolving the P-bid. So there's certainly, at least from the initial survey results, a palate for that. But this would involve a more formal mailing to those property owners. And the staff would work with the city attorney's office to get that distributed following tonight's discussion.
So you guys still good?
Absolutely. Let's start that immediately.
Yeah, let's move it forward and get it, get off our plate. But I do have, I would have thought that would have been enough for us to declare it. But I guess there's some legalities that we have to go through, is what I'm hearing. Bottom line.
That's correct.
All right, so we, we do have a motion to continue the...
I make, I make a motion that we start that process immediately.
Right, right. And we have a motion and a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. So that's going to take us to a public hearing. So I am going to open the public hearing for agenda item number twenty. And it says at the bottom here that the, we need to move this to another date. So does anyone want to make that motion, the recommendation at the bottom?
I move to continue the public hearing for the annexation of track map number two zero one three zero into Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number One, Zone EEE, to the city council meeting of September thirteen, twenty twenty-one.
I second his motion.
All right, so this is just to keep it open, right? So, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm sorry, aye.
All right, so we'll just keep it open for next city council meeting? Did I do that right?
Yes, till, till September thirteen.
Okay. I want to make sure I did that right. Okay. All right, so that takes us to another study session, which is the user fee. And this is item number twenty-one. And this is item number twenty-one. So I will open the public hearing.
So I'll, I guess I'll start over here.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, this is the comprehensive user fee schedule update. Before I begin, I would like to recognize David V. Velvos. He is our, he works in the information systems division and he is known to be our GIS mapping guru, uh, for the city of Ucaipa. And without David's help in this process and his ability to learn Will Dan's complex, basically their complex spreadsheet, we wouldn't be here before you today. Um, and he, with, with his stewardship in these numbers and working with myself and Ryan and, uh, members of Charles Abbott, um, the goal of us, and I think we've done it this year over the past three or four meetings throughout this year, is to clear up that audit finding. We now are confident with where our numbers are at. And the goal is that you should not see that remark in the audit finding next year. So, thank you, David, and the rest of the team that helped us put together this complex document that's before you this evening. So as detailed in the background section of the report, in two thousand sixteen, city council approved the cost allocation plan, which we refer to as the cap. That cap was based on fiscal year expenses for two thousand fifteen and sixteen. With that approval, that cap was then introduced to council in two thousand eighteen as part of our user fee program, the comprehensive user fee program. And what took place in that process is when they reviewed those numbers, because prior to two thousand eighteen, our user fees stayed the same for twenty-five years. So when we did, when Will Dan helped us get through the initial cap and then bringing the user fees before city council, it was a pretty large increase in fees, as you could only imagine. I think if maybe one or two of you were here in that process. Um, so it was a difficult item for council obviously recognized. In addition, in that process, they changed the methodology from evaluation to an actual cost. And then they capped the fees proposed at eighty percent of the fees that had been in place for twenty-five years. And in the attachments, you can see versus what was, um, recommended by Will Dan at the time. So, and also to apply the annual CPI. And then they directed staff to come back in the third year for review, which we came before council in November of this year. And based on that analysis, staff received direction for this item before you tonight, if we should, um, uncap basically the fees and apply CPIs to all three years and to adjust the plan check and building permit fees to actual costs and apply the CPI and add the two thousand nineteen and twenty CPI since it was inadvertently, that page was not presented to council over the last two years. So we do have catch-up with the building and safety fees. Pursuant to that direction that we received before you this evening, there's forty-four fees that will increase by four per, four point two percent or greater from the current adopted fees due to releasing the cap and applying the CPI. And these do not include the plan check and building and safety inspection fees that are also before you tonight. Uh, the significant increase is based on that original cap of eighty percent for the fees in place for twenty-five years. Three hundred and sixty-two fees, uh, did not have the cap associated and they've been adjusted by this year's CPI of three point six percent. The mech, recommended, uh, plan check and building and permit inspection fees have been adjusted to move, act, to more accurately align and review the inspection type to be performed for given occupancy and construction type and size of structure. This was an analysis done by Charles Abbott with input from city staff. And so we will go over this sheet a little bit. Uh, well, actually, David's gonna bring it up right now for you to see. So column A, which we also did a handout, uh, a paper handout for you to follow if, if it's easier. But column A represents the fees that were in place for twenty-five years. Column C is what's approved right now. So if you come into the counter and you need building and safety or inspection, uh, based on the type of service, this is what you're going to be paying. Column E represents, um, the recommended number from the original Will Dan study. So if you look at column A and column E on, on the paper before you, you'll kind of see, it's greater than just twenty percent. And I think that's, in people's mind, that's all we had to lift it. It's greater than that. Column H is the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two fees if we follow the Will Dan methodology, which is, and also removing the cap and applying CPI. Column N is what is being recommended before you this evening. It's the analysis that staff and Charles Abbott did based on reviewing the structure type, size, and allocation of time. In addition, the staff report kind of gave you some situations that we have. And the amount of minutes in the original study just did not account accurately for the time spent to provide the services needed. Column P is the difference between the current fees in place now and what's being proposed using the Charles Abbott Grider time adjustments. And Q just represents that percentage difference. It is important to note that even though some of the proposed increases are substantial, they are still based on the two thousand sixteen cap, which is based on fifteen, sixteen expenses here at the city of Ucaipa. Recently, council approved the two, twenty-one cap that was based on our nineteen, twenty expenses, which was approved by you guys in, uh, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. To ensure that our fees keep pace and to cover the relative cost of providing the service, we are recommending that you, you allow us to incorporate the twenty twenty-one cap in the next year's user fees when we come before you next spring. So that's part of our recommendation before you this evening. So next year, you'll see adjustments again in increases, um, higher than the CPI because we need to catch up the cost of providing that service. If not, the general fund continues to subsidize the user fees in, in the city of Ucaipa. The finance committee did meet and reviewed the proposed fees before you this evening and supports the two recommendations before you. Approval of these fees will increase the cost recovery associated with providing the service to the specific users requesting these services and will reduce the percentage, um, of the general fund subsidit, subsidy. I can't even say that right now. Subsidy, there we go, easy. So the recommenda, and I want to say that Ron Grider, he lost his voice conveniently yesterday. Um, but he can squeak, um, and answer any questions that you may have that pertaining, and, uh, David Redborg also. The recommendation is that you do conduct the public hearing and approve the resolution twenty, twenty-one forty-five, which really sends, you'll see the recommendation before you, you don't have to read the whole thing. And that you direct staff to incorporate the twenty twenty-one cap in next year's user fee presentation in the spring. So that's all I have, unless you have any other questions.
Uh, Jennifer, when we, when we first looked at these fees, I know we were looking at some areas that were like two hundred, two hundred and fifty percent. And that's what set off the, the eighty percent cap. Did... So I don't see any of those larger numbers at this point, so did that eighty percent cap work? We were trying to keep it from being hit all in one year. And so we were trying to drag it out over a number of years. So did that, that idea of the eighty percent cap work?
Yes, it worked.
Alright, I just, just to be clear, right? I don't see those numbers up there.
No.
That was the conclusion that I always draw.
You are absolutely correct, but you'll see some areas where, you know, they're jumping forty-seven percent or fifty percent. So we just wanted to recognize that people thought, oh, it's just about twenty percent. It's not because of how we applied the cap. So they are, they are, we do have increases before you this evening, we do recognize that. However, it's, it's...
But they're not the two to three hundred that we were looking at before?
Exactly.
Okay. So are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. This is, this is gonna affect, uh, this is gonna affect the building and the housing, isn't it?
Uh, I did ask Ron Grider that, uh, question and he can come down. And we, um, he works in other cities in our area and local, local and regional. And we are one of the lower fee cities in the area. And he can, he can squeak that out if he wants.
Yeah, but other cities aren't responsible for our twenty-eight hundred and some odd houses in eight years. We're responsible for that, right? So regardless of what the other cities are doing, as far as fees are concerned, that has no bearing on what we're doing here as far as our quota, right?
Everyone has their share of housing. We're, we're only twenty-eight, twenty-eight forty-six. I mean, some of them are eight thousand. And, um, uh, their, and their fees, I don't know what their fees are, but, you know, we're, we're one of the lower ones for our size city. But you're right, uh, to, to some degree, but I don't think it's, um, everybody's getting hit with, with, with housing. And our fees, as was indicated, one of the lower ones. So the impacts are actually not as great as, say, Redlands or, um, uh, Colton.
Our fees may be less, but we have the highest school fees in the state and we have extremely high water fees, extremely high. And they don't seem to care whether or not we...
No, I, I agree. The, um, those guys, but we have no, we have no say on that.
I understand that, but my question is, this is gonna affect our, this is definitely gonna affect the developers and the builders and the homeowners that are wanting to add to their house or whatever as far as these costs. Some of these costs are high, as far as the increases.
So if I, maybe, maybe if I may, Mr. Mayor Protam, um, one indicator perhaps of that. Number one, the user fees, although they're, they're costly, I'm not trying to say that they're, uh, you know, inexpensive, but they are a, uh, a, a much lo, a smaller component of the development costs compared to, as was mentioned a minute ago, uh, the development impact fees, primarily school and water, uh, development impact fees. The user fees are, are a smaller component of that process. And maybe an indicator of the, uh, ability for folks at the development community, uh, to, uh, pay for development impact fees or, or, uh, user fees and how they may impact the market is looking at commercial, uh, development over the last ten years, let's say. Over the last ten years, we've had, uh, the lowest commercial development impact fees, uh, again, that are higher than user fees. The development impact fees are a, a larger number. We've had the lowest development impact fee, uh, in, in almost the entire county. I think there's one exception, uh, perhaps. Uh, it didn't seem to have an impact in terms of drawing a commercial development, um, in our community versus, uh, other communities in the area. Um, and we seem to be pretty active right now in terms, in terms of commercial development. But for four or five years, six or seven years out of that ten years, um, our, our numbers were lower and we weren't seeing that kind of commercial development that perhaps they were seeing in some of the neighboring cities. So I'm not sure that the, the fees for developers are a big part of the decision-making process. And as, uh, Jennifer mentioned, this basically is gonna take us somewhere in the middle in terms of user fees. Uh, we're near the bottom now, Ron can attest to that if he can, if he can speak. But we're near the bottom now, this probably takes us somewhere in the middle. And as Jennifer mentioned, it still doesn't, uh, bring us up to speed as it relates to the, uh, cap. Uh, we're still at two thousand sixteen. So it's a continued, um, evolution. It's a continued, um, phased-in increase, as the mayor mentioned a minute ago. Um, and so, uh, we're recommending that we continue in that direction, including tonight's, uh, night, tonight's fees.
So this was definitely something that we recognized, uh, a number of years ago, that's, and we noticed that the increases were gonna be substantial. So that's why we did put that eighty percent cap, so.
If you, if I may, if you look, if you're able to look through the whole item, there were not increases across the board. There were, there were also some decreases as well because we looked at how much time should actually be spent based on history. And we were able to adjust those down. So there are some decreases as well, um, that occurred.
Can you give us an example, Ron?
Oh, yes, actually, if you want to pull up the fifty thousand square foot building. Can we go to the commercial fifty thousand? And go all the way to, yeah, so we can see. So in, at fifty thousand commercial, uh, fifty thousand square foot building, back in the ninety-three, ninety-seven, you can see it was sixty-one thousand five over... Okay, I can turn here and look better instead of looking up, I'm sorry. The current is twenty-five, three, seventy-six. And we went to, oh, that was an increase.
Is that twenty-five the increase?
Twenty-five, two oh seven, twenty-five. No, we went down. So where's the one?
We didn't include it.
Oh, okay, that's why they're not there. So we, we, they're not included in this, uh, from what I understand now. But there were some decreases because we looked closer at the numbers that were provided before and there were some timeframes that were like out of whack. Uh, they were really, they didn't make sense to me, like twelve hundred minutes to do an inspection for a, for, for an item later in the, in the process. So we took that way down to right, right around two hundred minutes. And we utilized some of that in some other areas because they were deficient. But a large majority of those minutes went away. So that, that cost ended up going down because it wasn't the same of, because the whole thing is based on time, right? So, so in explaining that, since they're not being shown here, those elements went away, we, in terms of actual time.
If you look down column O, you can see between Will Dan, if we take the Will Dan methodology now and Grider's recommendation, O will show you what percent, the difference between using the current methodology and at least, um, the, the recommended, there's some percentage increases and decreases on there.
So like, one went down what point, is that correct? Down three point seven percent?
Yeah.
Down one point eight percent, down point seven percent? So there are some that have gone down accordingly.
And it was based on, it was based on time, because you said that time, there were some that reflected that they were spending too much time...
No, they just weren't allocated appropriately.
Right.
It's the difference between if we go with the current methodology in Will Dan's study versus what's being recommended by Charles Abbott. If we stayed with the current methodology, there's some areas where the costs go up and down between Ron's numbers, let's say, and Will Dan's. But the overall from two thousand eighteen, we had some, went up.
Okay. You have anything else, Bob?
I guess not. I guess not.
Justin, you have anything?
I mean, if I was made to understand it correctly, this is the, this is to help offset the costs for our city staff to review plans and, and the, the costs that, uh, well, in my opinion, I was made to understand that, uh, the, the taxpayer shouldn't have to burden for a large development to pay for hundreds of houses to come into our city. So while I see that the fees have increased, I also don't think that a taxpayer should have to pay for the plan checks for a developer, uh, who wants to build houses here. So I, I, I had, I had a lot of questions during the finance committee meetings. It were, it was made clear to me, the, the method that this was being reached, how we got there. And, uh, I, I see it. I also don't, I don't think we should have to burden our taxpayers to subsidize, uh, the costs of, uh, plan checks for a large developer.
Plan checks and inspections.
And inspections, correct.
Are, are our taxpayers currently subsidizing?
Yes.
So we're paying out of the general fund to subsidize what Charles Abbott's doing?
Well, not just Charles Abbott, all of city services that have a user fee applied, yes.
But what we're talking about right now is what Charles Abbott, they're a vendor and they supply this plan check and the planning, right?
Based on their contract, they get a percentage of the...
Sixty-five, thirty-five, I'm familiar. But right now, we're having to subsidize this expense and the taxpayers are doing that right now? So in other words, we're not covering our cost?
Correct.
Currently?
Correct.
Yeah. You good?
I'm good, yeah.
I can come back too.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. David, you good? Alright, so, um, do you have any more presentations? Because I can close the public hearing at this point. Are we good to, to close? So I'm gonna, uh, close this up and open it up for council discussion and see if we have a motion.
Does one of these columns tell us what the percentage of subsidizing we're doing now? Does one of these columns tell us that right now, based on the fee schedule, how much we're, what percent? how much we're, what percentage the taxpayer is having to pay to get this work done?
Across the board, we don't have that. And in addition, it's based on two thousand fifteen, sixteen expenses here at the city, operational expenses. So that's why we're recommending for next year, we, we incorporate the twenty twenty one cap that you approved in May.
Well, I understand it, it's very frustrating. I, we went through this a couple of years ago, that's why I came up with that cap. And I get it, it's very frustrating, but you know, at some point, the, like, uh, council member Beaver said that taxpayers shouldn't be subsidizing plan checks, so.
I'll motion to, uh, we had to direct staff to incorporate this or how, what's the wording for it?
Yeah, it's the recommendation one and two before you. Conduct a public hearing and approve resolution twenty twenty one forty five, rescinding resolutions number twenty 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 eight, twenty twenty fifty two and twenty twenty sixty six. And adopting an update to the comprehensive user fee schedule and amending the fees and charges for services rendered in relation to community development, building and safety, fire prevention and planning, business license development. Uh, sorry, yard sale permits, false alarms, construction and demolition, recycling and various other general and administrative city services and making related determinations pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And direct staff to incorporate the twenty twenty one cost allocation plan known as a cap update and an annual consumer price index adjustment factor as part of the user fee schedule update for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three.
I move approval as so eloquently stated by our assistant, city manager.
Is that what you wanted me to do? Sorry.
I'll second.
All right, great motion. All right, now we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So that's gonna take us to a study session. And I'm not sure who's in charge. Is this Ben?
Yes, Ben will be presenting this item.
Ben, for the, for the record, I do have a speaker slip.
All right, thank you all, Mayor and city council members. This is a study session regarding the city's oak tree preservation policy. Um, on February twenty sixth nineteen ninety six, city council did adopt resolution number ninety six dash O three, which did establish the comprehensive oak tree conservation and protection guidelines for the city of Ucaipa. For kind of background, so the city does recognize the value that oak trees provide to the community. And so this is reiterated through two different general plan policies, policies P R forty four and H N three, three dash four. And the resolution itself is to help kind of give the guidance for how to administer uh, the city's preservation, oak tree preservation elements. Um, and to implement the development code that governs the oak tree conservation, section number eighty nine dash zero five oh one and the subsequent sections. Um, in recent months, however, we have received a few projects that have affected a number of oak trees that did require city council review. This is a pretty unusual case, um, in terms of having city council review. It hasn't been very often that, uh, four oak trees were impacted by a particular project or a certain need. And so it was unusual to have in twenty twenty one, two different, uh, applications that did trigger city council review. And so with that, on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, city council did direct staff to return um, with the oak tree permit process and the resolution to see if there was any, um, updates that would be necessary. You know, since its original inception over two decades ago. And I'm happy answering your questions. The resolution ninety day, or ninety six O three is also in the city council packet. Um, and yeah, that concludes my presentation.
All right, so do we have any questions or comments or concerns for staff?
I've got a few.
All right, go ahead, John.
So when reading this ordinance versus some of the documentation that we had in the previous city council meeting revolving around removing trees for the church, I think a gas station, and I'm not sure exactly the other location, there's two or three. It appeared in that verbiage that there was a penalty for removing trees that were compromised and/or was deemed to be dead, dead trees. But when reading through this one, it appears that under, let me find my page here. Page three sixty eight, four sixty eight, sorry. That it, the verbiage in there indicates that generally that would be waived. Is that our, is that depict what we're doing right now? Generally, if it's dead or compromised, considered to be a fire hazard or something of that nature that we are allowing people to remove that without being penalized with a two, a one to one or two to one, three to one type ratio?
So that section, I think what you're referring to is under subsection E one is the requirement for the oak tree port itself may be waived. So if there was a dead oak tree, evaluation of the oak tree health in that case would not be required for that.
So that's for a report, that's for the tree? So what, so if I have a tree on my property that's dead, am I allowed to remove that without any permit or any approval process to alleviate any kind of a fire hazard?
So the oak tree permit itself does still require, um, or a removal of any tree does still trigger the oak tree permit. Um, it's under section four oak tree permit processing procedures. A, any person designed to remove, relocate, cut branches or encroach in the protected zone of an oak tree must obtain the oak tree permit through that. And then there is some exceptions specifically for dead wood without oak tree permit. And then, uh, live tissue that's not exceeding two inches in diameter may also be removed.
So some of my concern is that some of the folks that live in my district, we probably have the highest uh, concentration of oak trees, of wild wood in certain areas up there. And brought to my attention through some folks up there, in times past, people have tried to remove some of their vegetation, things of that nature within the guidelines that does not require a permit. So it's under the two inch diameter or it's dead. There are some folks in that area that may take it upon themselves to turn them into city hall. So is there some sort of a process that we could put in place? Whether they call in for a permit or it's a filling out an application, something that would allow them to remove that stuff off of their property to prevent fire hazards without being turned in by everybody in their neighborhood?
So some sort of expedited plan review for removal of dead trees and it's kind of.
Or something or some way that maybe if people are concerned that someone is removing trees from their property that has not had their appropriate, um, approval, that there is a way that they can verify that besides just picking up the phone and calling everybody and making everybody in high speed wobble that someone's removing stuff off their property, trying to take, do care for their area. In general, it would appear that most of the folks up there, they all like their trees, they like them there, they want them there. But it has to do with the ability for them to remove overgrowth, uh, up there in that area due to fire hazards. If a fire starts in that neighborhood, we're gonna probably have some problems. I'm not a fireman, but we have some people in the council that are. I would think that that would be of concern up there. So I'm, I'm, well, my concern is in the verbiage in the ordinance, is that the citizens have the right or a way to be able to remove that vegetation without having to go through a lot of hoops, without obviously making it so that even just chops down a good tree. I mean, I, I understand the value of the ordinance, I'm not trying to remove it. Just wanna make sure that they have some sort of recourse to keep their neighborhood safe from fire potentials.
Yeah, I think that's certainly a feasible, we can update. So as far as the resolution, there is some kind of variety of different policies that are listed kind of in the back of the resolution. So certainly one could be added in that provides greater clarity on the removal of dead wood or kind of, um, kind of the fire mitigation measures and allow a little bit more of a streamlined process for that. And certainly we don't, um, every once in a while, we've had issues where people have cut down oak tree or removed parts of it and certainly does get reported to code enforcement. But certainly a way that recognizes a earnest effort to protect the overall health of the, the forest up there without, um, a burdensome process, certainly something that can be, can be implemented.
And then the other question I have, and I'm not sure what page it's on, is talking about the sizes of the trees when you're talking about replacement values. Give me a second here. I guess the gist of my question with that is, when reading this, it would appear that depending on the size of the tree that you remove from your property, you have a certain size that you have to consider for replacing with, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. So it's kind of a two different, um, options or kind of elements is kind of the larger the tree, the replacement um, is usually in, with, in lieu of other larger trees or kind of more numerous trees and then the smaller one can be replaced, it may be still a three to one ratio, but the bot sizes will be substantially smaller. So allows a little bit more younger trees to be replaced in lieu of kind of that big, those medium sized trees.
So help me understand this, if I've got a full sized oak tree on my property, I say full size, say the canopy's, I don't know, forty feet, and I've got to remove that tree for one reason or some, or another, and now I've got to replace that tree, am I trying to find a tree like size to the tree I'm taking out? Or am I allowed to find a smaller tree to replace it? Because if you're gonna replace the tree with the same sized tree somewhere else in the city, that could be a substantial cost to the citizen.
So it isn't necessarily the same equivalent size of the tree. Certainly, um, one recognition is that the larger, at certain point, when you get into the, the multi hundred years trees, the relocation of a similar tree, one a nursery that don't have that type of tree available. And then two, the relocation ends up being unlikely to be successful. Um, but there is kind of the, the threshold when establishes the ratios, and I'm blanking on which page it is. Um, it kind of ranges, so you may have a requirement for a sixty inch bot tree, which is still a large sizable tree or kind of the more expensive tree specimen that a nursery may have for kind of that larger scale tree, whereas if you have a smaller tree that isn't nearly as historic in that quality, you can replace it with, you know, the, the twenty five inch bots or something that's not nearly as expensive, but is part of the, the threshold is to help encourage at least getting something close as a bigger tree established somewhere in the community as a mediation measure, kind of commiserate with the age of that tree. But it's not necessarily the same sized tree is not the requirement.
I, I completely dropped the ball. I forgot that we had a public comment, so can I, can I bring up Doug Williams really quick? Can you put three minutes on there?
Thank you, Mayor.
Where you from, where you from, Doug?
I live in the, uh, exact neighborhood that Mr. Thorpe was speaking of.
Okay.
I'm, I'm residing in Ucaipa. I spoke, you weren't, you weren't here the last time, but I, I provided the, uh, council with the Firewise information that we started, a Firewise community, we're accepted in, in that neighborhood. And one of our major concerns was the oak tree ordinance. Several residents have come up to me concerned about, uh, not wanting to trim their trees away from the houses because they were going to get fined or worried about some consequences. And two, the neighbors specifically told me of incidences where someone reported them for trimming trees. And one of our issues is the, uh, the growth of the oak trees from the ground up, what we call ladder fuels. In that if a fire comes in and gets, uh, burning in some of the trees in those lower branches, it spreads to the rest of the tree, creates a huge amount of heat and fire and, you know, and it spreads. If we have the ability to trim those trees to, let's say, six, eight feet, the, the fire can, has a, a tendency to, uh, burn the grasses and just go through, not catching the tree on fire and therefore creating less heat and less damage and et cetera. So one of our biggest concerns is the ability, whether it's two inches or not, to, to be able to trim those trees up without penalty. And I think that we should be encouraging residents to do so instead of, uh, you know, creating ordinances to, um, not allow them to do that. I know the, uh, what the reason for the ordinance was, and being a resident of the area, we love those oak trees. We want them to be there. We don't want to take them down. But our issue is with the trimming of them, reducing that fuel and getting it away from some of the houses so that if we do have a fire in that area, we don't have loss of houses, property, life, et cetera. Um, one of my biggest concerns is with the enforcement. I think, I think most of the folks are aware of the ordinance, but the question is, is it code enforcement coming through? And maybe as city council might want to direct staff to do some research to find out, are we getting complaints from people? And that's starting the process of fining, uh, folks? Or is it code enforcement just driving around? That might be something to consider in looking at, you know, where the enforcement is and what, what the ordinance has accomplished in the past in terms of trimming. So I, I would encourage, uh, as you go through this session, that if we could find some wording to allow encouragement of folks to trim the, the fuel, to trim the trees and be able to have, uh, you know, safe fuel reduction and at the same time, not hurt the trees and keep them alive and well. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Doug. All right, so now we'll continue, sorry. Do you have anything else, John?
That's, that's the gist of it.
Okay. David, do you have any?
Um, no, I, I wish Steve Franken was here to give us some expert advice on, uh, you know, tree health and what we can and should not do. I, I, I understand what the speaker is talking about with respect to ladder fuels and, and there, there are in the code here, it does allow for, um, uh, trees or limbs, at least two inches in diameter or less to be removed if, if it's encroaching on, on property. Now, how far back, I don't know how, you know, how far back you can trim it. But, um, yeah, this is, this is a tough one. And I would prefer to have an expert talk to us about what we can and cannot do with these oak trees. And we have an arborist and who's, um, who's knowledgeable and such stuff. And I'd like to, I'd like to hear what he has to say with respect to, uh, to, to trimming the trees and meet the intent of our code. And again, meet the intent of, of public safety.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
So, um, I mentioned this the last time about the church on California Street that has twenty two oak trees. Initially, in, when this ordinance was designed, it was designed to preserve the oak trees along Wildwood Canyon. And right now you've got some electrical wires running through oak trees and Edison can't even trim them, but they're inside the oak tree, which seems a little bit ridiculous to me because that's not good for the folks that live up there if their electricity is interfered with by a good wind and oak tree. So the church, we really, the, the ordinance has literally rendered the property the church owns useless. They can't build on it because there's twenty two oak trees. And I don't think this ordinance, just like the hillside ordinance, recently or in the last five years, we modified the hillside ordinance. We took it from everywhere in Ucaipa where there's a slope to just the perimeter. And we modified that ordinance. I think that we need to modify the oak tree ordinance, uh, to a certain area because obviously the, the idea or the intent was to preserve certain areas. For example, the oak tree by the gas station at the corner of Ucaipa Boulevard and Bryant. That tree had to go because that property couldn't be developed. And that's not really the perimeter, that's not really out, you know, out in the open. It's right in the developed part of town. There's another oak tree right across the street on, uh, Mefaradi's property, a huge oak tree. That tree's gonna have to go and they really shouldn't be penalized for that because that property can't really be developed without that tree being there. So if we modify the oak tree ordinance to say it's the perimeter like the hillside ordinance, then there wouldn't be any question about oak trees inside the developed part of the Ucaipa. Does that make sense?
It, it does. Uh, I'd like to remind you though, that they can chop down the tree, they just have to replace it. And, and it doesn't necessarily have to be on that property, it could be at another approved site.
So why haven't we been planting oak trees at Eldorado Park? And why haven't we, uh, planted oak trees at Five Winds Ranch? Why is it when we have a workday, we plant some other tree? And if we, if we value or, uh, consider the oak trees of Ucaipa so sacred, why haven't we been planting the hell out of oak trees at all these different locations? That's the part that I'm confused about.
We have, I mean, we've been planting oak trees at Five Winds, Eldorado, Seventh Street Park, um, up Wildwood Canyon Road. Someday that'll be.
We have been planting these same oak trees.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Could we plant more? Sure, hopefully we'll plant some more here in October. But, uh, we've been planting them, uh, throughout the community where they make sense.
But in the case of that, that gas station, he, it cost him, how much money did it cost him to, to transplant or replant? How much was that? Because a sixty gallon or that big, biggest oak tree is very, very expensive. Very expensive. And you add that to the cost of the development and again, getting back to. And again, getting back to building houses, I mean, we keep adding layers on top of building houses, we're never going to meet a quota. And whether or not the governor's serious or not, maybe he's not, maybe he's just playing games like he is with COVID-19, but bottom line is, he does have the power to do whatever he wants, he's proven that over and over again.
Well, considering that there is not a one-size-fits-all for everything, perhaps what we could put in the ordinance is that if, if they could come into council and get an exemption to, to the rule, I'd be okay with that.
Sure, as part of the permit process, they have to go to council anyway, as you've seen. A couple of things that I've heard, both here and, and previous conversations, is a, perhaps an expedited process for trimming if it's over two inches and, you know, dead, dead limbs, that sort of thing that require a permit, maybe that's a over-the-counter permit, online permit, that's a simple process that, you know, provides a little expediency and trust in the, in the process. And to answer a question that was kind of on the table, code enforcement isn't proactive as it relates to their activity for these, these types of things. They would only respond if there is a complaint. And then what I also heard, I think, is, you know, perhaps the, the large size of the specimen trees to replace a tree over 48 inches in diameter, goes all the way up to perhaps a 60-inch box, maybe it's, maybe that's something that council would like us to come back with is a reduction in that largest-sized replacement tree, which goes to the cost of, of replacing specimen trees that have to be removed for whatever reason. And then the last question is just really a policy decision for council to grapple with, and that's where does this apply? If, you know, right now it applies throughout the community, is there an interest in restricting that or reducing that area as, as Mayor Protem Duncan just mentioned? So the first two, I think, you know, at least from what I've heard, maybe makes some sense, it seems like there's some concurrence, but you should probably take them one at a time and see if there's a direction to create a more expedited process, even a trust process for trimming dead limbs in a tree. And then perhaps reducing the replacement sizes for the large specimens, replacing the, you know, the large 48-inch diameter and plus tree, and then finally the location.
If I may add as well, one thing we can do as part of the process is do some additional public outreach and kind of working with property owners on the best way to, to trim trees. The oak tree permit process is not meant to be a deterrent, it's a fairly straightforward thing. Really, the purpose is to, as Councilmember Avila noted, is to protect the health of the trees, is to make sure that the trimming is done in a manner that doesn't have adverse stuff. If you over-trim, sometimes tree trimmers like to be overzealous and trim for the sake of making it look like they got their money's worth, will end up actually resulting in compromises to the tree, additional sucker growth that actually ends up creating a more unruly tree than maybe was intent. And so we can certainly provide additional resources so that property owners that do want to do the fuel reduction have kind of the tools so that if they do a streamlined permit process, they know exactly kind of the do's and don'ts so that they don't create an inadvertent situation that they didn't mean to do.
You have to spell out a speaker's name. All right, so the expedited process, are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right, how about replacement, maybe reducing size on the replacement to help, help offset costs?
Yes.
I'm okay with that. It seems reasonable to me. And expedited. And then the third one was something that Mayor Protem, do you want to create an area?
Boundaries.
Boundaries. I, I wouldn't want him to go down that road, I would just rather leave it up to us.
I, I really believe that we need to maintain our, our historical heritage. You know, we have so much development in Southern California, we're turning, and, and I'm not speaking as a, you know, a tree hugger or anything, I'm just, you know, I'm talking about, you know, my generational, my history. And where used to be a lot of live oaks everywhere in Southern California along the valleys and now it's all stripped down to, to cement, clay and glass. And I'm, I would like to preserve our cultural heritage and preserve the oak trees. I don't want to have a, a specific area where they're allowed and to be untouched and then we can go ahead and chop off, you know, in the middle of town. I mean, the trees were here first and, and not to, again, I'm not a bleeding heart or anything, but I really truly believe that we should strongly maintain our, our cultural heritage, which includes those trees. They provide food for the local fauna, you know, the squirrels and whoever else takes advantage of that, the, the birds, and it's just, I don't know, I just, I just have this feeling that this is something that's, that's important to me to want to, to fight for, to protect.
But if someone, if someone buys a property with a huge oak tree on it and decide that they're going to cut it down, they're going to do that anyway, we just have to approve moving a gazillion oak trees to some other location, right?
I, no, I, I get it, I get it, but that doesn't mean...
Is that true, is that a true statement?
Well, no, not exactly. You can chop down a tree if you can replace it. I think, what, two-to-one or three-to-one? What is that?
Depending on the size, two-to, two or three-to-one.
Yeah, two or three-to-one, yeah, you can do that, but...
Can you, can you do that? I mean, is that, is that part of the rule?
Yes, yeah, I said that earlier, is that, is that you can get a permit to chop down an oak tree, but you have to replace it. And that's when you asked the question, why are we not replacing, you know, just planting more oak trees? My thought is that I don't want to create a zone where you can arbitrarily cut down oak trees and not have to replace it. That's, that's my, that's my thought and opinion.
Can I bring up Christine?
Yes.
Christine, are you guys good?
Sure, go ahead.
Christine Muller.
Appreciate you guys hearing me out. Regarding the oak tree ordinance, that was put into place to prevent people from cutting down the big trees. So it's not to prevent people from trimming their trees and taking care and maintaining their trees, it's to prevent people from cutting down these beautiful oak trees that we, that we covet. You know, keep in mind, Ukaypa's Valley of the Big Heads, right? All the, the Indian bands came over here and, and gathered their acorns. So if there is a oak tree on somebody's property when they bought it, they know it's there. And I think the city is very reasonable because they don't say, replace a 100-year-old oak tree with a 100-year-old oak tree or two 50-year-old oak trees, they say, go buy 25 gallons, you know, four of them and put them someplace, they're very reasonable. Don't miss the forest through the trees, right? It's not to prevent, I've been a horseback riding in this, horseback rider in this community for over 30 years, and when I see somebody cut down a beautiful tree, you can't put it back, right? It's there to prevent that. And that happens in Ukaypa, you see it all the time in Wildwood Canyon, you see it where people own property that you're not, you can't see from the street, but it happens all the time. The oak tree ordinance is to prevent that from happening, not to prevent two-inch branches, of course that's going to happen. And Bobby's right, and so is, is David, we've got a great arborist, Steve Franken, you give him a call, he'll run right out there. There's a very easy way to streamline the process and protect the oak trees, oak trees first. Just so you guys know, the state park has ancient oak groves, there's ancient oak groves, they're thousands of years old, thousands, 800 years in Wildwood Canyon, you know, those are maintained by Mark Miller, who is a retired firefighter, and he's an arborist. So there's a lot of energy put into preserving these trees and that's why the oak tree ordinance is there, not to prevent the homeowner that wants to trim his tree, go for it, there's got to be a way to do it, but you should really focus on protecting the trees, not worried about a homeowner who's got a two-inch limb. We can do that, we can accomplish that goal and make it really easy for Steve to go over there and give him advice, he's a great guy for that, but you got to protect the trees, protect those trees, they were here first, right? You take a 100-year-old oak tree down and we're never going to see it again, right? We should be focused on making canopies of oaks in our tree, in our community. We have an oak tree right in the, in the roundabout, that's what we're about. Don't worry about the little stuff, the little stuff can be taken care of, you just deal with it, right? You get somebody out there, you streamline, streamline the process and everybody wins. But if you don't protect those big oaks, we'll never see them again, it just doesn't work like that. And Bobby, we planted, in fact, the first Make a Difference Day, we planted so many trees that we were the ones that won the award in the state of California for planting those trees. And we're proud of it.
You planted oak trees?
Yes, 13 years later, I can go look at Flag Hill Park and see what me and my kids did, means a lot to me.
All right, thank you. All right, so we had those three, I think we broke it down to three different ideas and I think, did we kind of agree on the first two? Expedite the process for cleaning up the tree, I think is reasonable.
I do have one more question.
What was the other one? Replacement, we don't necessarily have to replace it with a huge, huge tree, I think that's reasonable.
And I didn't see this in there, but is there, is there a verbiage in there, requires an arborist from the city to come trim a tree if a homeowner wants to trim the power lines out of their tree or fix encroachment on their house?
I'm not sure.
So I'll kind of cover a few different stuff. So the oak tree report needs to be prepared by kind of a certified arborist, and so Steve Franken is usually the one that ends up doing those reports unless one is provided, then he'll kind of just peer review it just to make sure that it's consistent. As part of the utility lines, usually Southern California Edison will pull kind of a master oak tree permit when they're going to be doing power line work or tree trimming, especially in kind of the Wildwood Canyon area. And so normally, as part of that permit process, they get kind of a blank approval, they work with Steve on when they're going to be trimming certain areas, and then he's just making sure. But certainly, there is a pragmatic understanding that we don't want tree limbs going where power lines are and, and trying to find a solution that protects both the health and longevity of the tree, but also doesn't create a separate fire hazard. Certainly, other parts of the state are still dealing with, you know, their utility purveyor and trees lighting on fire, so that's certainly not the approach. And we do work with Edison and their contractors to do kind of a bundled permit, so to speak, to cover a number of different properties that they may be doing work in on that.
If I may, there's also some evolving state legislation relative to fire safety and you heard about the Fire Safe Community up in Wildwood, for example, and I think Live Oak, they're trying to do the same thing. And so we would come back with some of that language, I think, in the draft ordinance for your consideration as well, how, how you overlay the, you know, the protection of the oak trees in general, larger specimen oak trees with the fire protection and, and some of the new state law requirements for fire safety. And I would submit that the Fire Department is going to be more involved in, in some of those discussions as well. So we would anticipate introducing some of that language in the ordinance as well for your consideration.
So in that situation, the state would then trump whatever ordinance we have as far as fire safety is concerned?
Yeah, they've got certain fire safety requirements, separation from chimneys and, and, you know, dead tree removals and, and, you know, of course, we allow for that anyway, but, and tree trimming as well, just in general. So we'll overlay some of the new state laws as it relates to fire safety with what we're hearing tonight in terms of the, you know, protection of the oak trees and come back to you with that balanced approach.
All right. So do you have enough information? Do we, we need to...
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is lack of concurrence for restricting the location in the community, but concurrence on the first two items, working on a tree trimming expedited process. And, and the second item was replacement sizes and, you know, a 48-inch box tree is still a big tree, so maybe we just eliminate the 60-inch box tree, so.
All right. You guys okay with that? Everyone good? Good?
Good.
All right. All right, so that takes us to announcements, do you have any announcements? Anyone?
No, National Night Out, forgot, did we talk about that at all at the dais? I thought it was a great event, thank you to our public safety, law enforcement and fire. It was a great turnout considering the temperature, how hot was it? Yeah, it was hot and we're on the asphalt and people were coming out in droves. That's another example of community support. And I thought that's, it was so great to see everybody out there. Had a couple of people go down because of the heat, I think, but other than that, it was, it was very, very good. Look forward to next year. Oh, by the way, California has the most number of cities that participate in the National Night Out, 377 communities in the state of California. The second one is Texas with 342 or 43. But, you know, we, we are, despite what we hear about in our media, there is a lot of support for our law enforcement community and public safety in general.
Yeah. John, you have anything?
I have anything.
No, everyone's good. All right, so that takes us to closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got two items on this evening's closed session agenda. The first is conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim, number 2021-04 from Veronica Burrhop. We would expect reportable action on that item this evening. The second item is conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, it's regarding actual prescription opioid litigation is listed on the agenda, we do not expect reportable action on that item this evening.
All right, with that, I will adjourn this council meeting.